Whoops, I didn't have my mic on. This is the February seventeenth meeting of the Chicago Unified School District Board of Education. We are going into closed session and I'm asking if there is any public comment on closed session items. We have no indication that there is so we will reconvene at six o'clock for regular session after our closed session.
February 17th, meeting of the Chico Unified School District Board of Education. For the last hour, we have been in closed session. There are no announcements. We want, number one, an update on labor relations, negotiations.
Flag salute.
Huh? Flag salute. Oh, my gosh. Excuse me. Yes, thank you. All rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, Mr. Hanlon, update on labor negotiations.
Okay.
Why am I out of sync? Thank you. Announcements. Do we have two?
Yes, Madam President, I'll start. Chico Unified School District would like to publicly acknowledge and thank Butte County Public Health Department for organizing COVID vaccinations for our staff. The administration of the vaccination clinics was extremely well-run and organized. We appreciate the hard work, organization, and collaboration that needed to take place in order to offer vaccinations to the educators in Chico and Butte County. We would like to thank Monica Soderstrom and Beth Hackathorn with Butte County Public Health Department for their tireless effort and hours on the phone coordinating the clinics. We appreciate their support for our educators in Chico. Chico Unified would also like to publicly thank the Chico Area Recreation District for their help in assisting utilizing the Lakeside Pavilion for the vaccination clinics. We do have a joint use agreement with CARD, and we work together on a regular basis related to facilities. However, our request to use the Pavilion was very, had a very short timeline, and it was outside of our normal process. The CARD staff was very responsive, very supportive, and frankly went above and beyond our normal expectations to serve us. We would like to thank Jason Bugey for being the point person at CARD. We would like to thank CARD staff that showed up early to open up the facility and showed up late to close it down at night. They were friendly, accommodating, and hardworking. We continue to value our working relationship with CARD as we serve the Chico community.
Any other announcements?
And right along those lines, we do have an update that we just received yesterday regarding vaccines and quarantine. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Keen, and she's going to give us a quick update.
Sure. Hello, good evening. We did just receive this, as Kelly said, today via our school nurses. The guidance has come down from California Department of Public Health to Butte County Public Health, and I will read to you what it says here. On February 10th, 2021, CDC updated COVID-19 quarantine guidance for fully vaccinated people. California Department of Public Health supports this guidance, which is stated below. Vaccinated persons with an exposure to someone with suspected or confirmed COVID-19 are not required to quarantine if they meet all of the following criteria. And there are three criteria. One, the person is fully vaccinated, for example, more than two weeks following the receipt of the second dose in a two-dose series, or equal to or more than two weeks following receipt of one dose of a single-dose vaccine. The second criteria, the person is within three months within receipt of this last dose in the series. And the last, the person has remained asymptomatic since the current COVID-19 exposure. Persons who do not meet all three of the above criteria should continue to follow current California Department of Public Health quarantine guidance after exposure to someone with suspected or confirmed COVID-19. It does go on to say that fully vaccinated persons who do not quarantine should still watch for symptoms of COVID-19 for 14 days following an exposure, and then what they should do following that. Additionally, it says these criteria could also be applied when considering a work restrictions for fully vaccinated healthcare personnel, and talks about inpatients and residents in healthcare settings. So that just came out to us today, and our Chico Unified nurses will follow this in accordance with Butte County Public Health and California Department of Public Health.
Thank you, Ms. Keen. Turn it back over to Madam President.
Yes, thank you. Under, and I co-sign all of the things you said, Kevin, I got my second today, and they are just, it's an amazing process, and yes, they are friendly and it's very thorough. And my arm doesn't hurt yet. Okay, items from the floor. We have four speakers signed up that have been drawn in random order, and our first speaker...
Madam President, I have the list here.
Oh, you've got it. Thank you.
I do. We have Jeffrey Martinick.
Yes.
Hello, board. I thank you so much for taking my phone call, let me speak again on this issue. I just wanted to voice my concerns to the board, that I feel like you guys are pulling our kids out of school. I feel like the reason why we were out of school initially was because of the fear of COVID-19 and the unknown. Now, it's no longer something to be afraid of, especially with vaccination. So I just urge the board to reconsider going back to full-time, in-person learning this year. The state health department published its information on how to return to school safely for this year, not even addressing next year's school yet. They want people to go back to school this year. I feel like the school board itself is empowered to go ahead and ask the teachers to return to school, full-time, in-person learning, and there's really no reason not to do it. Excuse me. Some of that language is fairly favoritist for us to try to do our best with what we got to work with, and I think some of the language in the education code is also very clear that you guys need to use the greatest, you know, the education code at one percent, that's pretty clear that we need to be using everything possible to get back to in-person So anyway, thank you for listening. The other comment I'd like to make is that I'd like to see you guys vote, and I think you guys should vote every meeting publicly so the people can find out who it is that's keeping us from going to full-time learning. Anyway, that's my main concern for you guys. I think you guys are working hard. I feel like you guys are missing your duty. You have a duty as citizens, you have a duty to the children, and I believe the teachers are, and the teachers union should go back to work, just like the rest of us. So thank you so much for your time, and please vote, so we can go back to school.
Hi, Matt. I'm going to put you on speakerphone. You'll be addressing the school board. When you hear a bell, it means you have 30 seconds left, okay? Go ahead, Matt. Good evening, board members. My name is Matthew Thomason, and I am co-chair of Chico Parents for In-Person Learning. I called into the previous board meeting to express my concern regarding the public's need for a return to a full-time, in-person learning environment. Unfortunately, the vote was four to one to maintain the current ANPM model. We have heard your reasons for voting this way and understand your concern. However, as parents and community members, our concerns and needs are more pressing and vital in light of an avalanche of evidence that has been demonstrated across multiple other local school districts, counties, and states that have returned to full-time, in-person learning. As you no doubt witnessed earlier as you entered the school grounds today, parents, students, teachers, and community members are beyond frustrated that their voices are not being heard. We no longer want to hear reasons why Chico Unified School District cannot return to a full-time model. If you speak to other school boards, superintendents, principals, or teachers of communities in our region, as we have, you come away with a clear message: When the board and leaders have the will, they find a way. Butte County Public Health and the California Department of Public Health have demonstrated that they are willing to work with school districts to return kids to full-time learning. We, as parents, students, teachers, and community members, want this matter placed on a board meeting agenda, and a specific detailed plan in writing to send a clear message just how this board plans to return our kids back to their schools full-time as soon as possible. Keep in mind that the citizens of Chico were very unhappy with the direction their city was moving in prior to the most recent city council election. Citizens across the city united across political affiliations to vote in a council whose viewpoint and will aligned with the people. While some of you were recently elected, others will soon be up for reelection if you choose to do so. That may be a long ways away, but we are fed up enough to take other measures before that time if necessary, specifically California Elections Code 11,000 through 11,386, the recalling of local elected officials. We no longer want to hear of reasons why this cannot be done. We want to hear a will and a plan for how we are going to achieve this goal, that we all agree is needed. Thank you for your time. Hey, Casey, I'm going to put you on speakerphone. You'll be addressing the school board. When you hear a bell, it means you have 30 seconds left, okay? Go ahead, Casey.
Good evening, Superintendent Staley, President Robinson, trustees, staff, and guests. My name is Casey Taylor, and I'm the executive director of Achieved Charter School of Paradise. My name is Casey Taylor, and I'm the Executive Director of Achieved Charter School of Paradise. On behalf of the chief, board, staff, students, and families, I'm respectfully submitting a charter petition for Achieved Charter School of Chico for the term of July 2021 to June 2026. I believe that you all have received a copy of our petition tonight. I want to thank Superintendent Staley and Director Keen for taking the time to meet with me about this process. I know you all are focusing on a lot of important priorities right now, so I do appreciate your time. As I mentioned last night, last month, the opportunity Chico Unified School District has afforded us to operate Achieved temporarily in Chico is allowing hundreds of families, parents, grandparents, children, teachers, school leaders, and support staff to heal and begin rebuilding their lives. The majority of our school community plans to remain in Chico, put down roots, and start getting involved and build connections in the city, which is why we are submitting a charter petition to you tonight. While Achieved has been in Chico, we've been able to build on our already established and successful model and develop an educational program that provides high levels of mental health support, builds resilience, focuses on trauma recovery, and mitigates learning loss, especially for students affected by a natural disaster. Over the past several years, Butte County has seen more than our fair share of natural disasters. These disasters have displaced families and communities, interrupted daily life, and caused loss and trauma that will be felt in Butte County for years to come. Achieved has a unique opportunity to serve students and families directly and indirectly affected by these disasters and integrate opportunities to recover and build resilience as part of our daily instructional program. In fact, some of our families will be sharing their stories of hope and success with you during our upcoming public hearings. We are requesting the opportunity to partner with Chico Unified School District to continue serving our now collective community in Chico for the long term. We look forward to working with you and your staff through this petition process. Thank you so much for your consideration.
And lastly, I'm calling Susan Domeneghini.
Good evening. This is Susan Domeneghini, Executive Director of Blue Oak Charter School. Blue Oak Charter School and its community wishes to welcome and congratulate the new and continuing board members, and thank you for your service in this trying time. 2021 marks Blue Oak's 20th year in Chico, bringing a Waldorf-inspired education to the public domain. We currently serve about 300 students. Blue Oak is providing both hybrid and distance education. Our hybrid students are onsite Monday through Thursday, 8:15 to 12:15. By encouraging creative development, creativity, developing emotional intelligence, and fostering a sense of community, Blue Oak works to strengthen its students for a lifetime level of learning. Here is a parent endorsement for you. Ten years ago, my husband and I attended a tour of Blue Oak School, and it was, as it still is, exhilarating. We witnessed students engaging in learning and supportive of each other. Classrooms are painted in the colors specific to the development of students at each grade level. Children are encouraged to be inquisitive. The excitement that teachers hold is mirrored by their students. In classrooms, students approached adults on the tour with confidence. They offered to show their work and encouraged adults to ask questions. I envisaged my little kindergarten-aged guy as a fifth grader confidently showing his work to a strange parent. It was exactly what we wanted for our son and his future, a lifelong love of learning. This year, we watched our oldest child graduate with other students that he had known and grown up with from kindergarten through eighth grade. It is a remarkable journey to witness when a child is supported wholeheartedly as a free-thinking individual through their adolescence by a whole community of people. As a longtime supporter of Blue Oak Charter School, my family and I have known firsthand how fortunate we are to have this school available in a public setting for all who wish to attend. We also know that keeping this educational opportunity alive and well takes many hands. From our daily verse, "For as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school." Thank you for your support. Blue Oak hopes that each of you come onsite to experience this program in action. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Now, Mr. Hanlon, it's for negotiations update.
It's my turn, huh?
Yes.
So we met last week on Wednesday. We had a number of items that we talked about extensively. One was Article 11 regarding assignments, reassignments, and transfers, which will be somewhat of an issue next year, depending on enrollment around the district. We just worked on clarification of language so that it was crystal clear what the words meant. And we reached probably 99% agreement on most of it, so we should wrap up the details next time. We also spent some time on all-day kindergarten. As I've reported before, the plan is to have all of our kindergartens in the district full day next year. Previously, we had all of them half-day, and we've been in transition for the last four years. COVID kind of put the brakes on that, so we should complete that next year. And we are working on turning the MOU language that got us there into permanent language in the contract. So we'll continue to work on that. And then we also discussed interest-based bargaining. We have some new members on both sides of the table, and we worked on getting them up to speed. Ted Sullivan did a great presentation for our newbies on the team on both sides. And we will be working on compensation issues starting next week using IBB. Those look forward to working with CTA on that. CSCA, we're still working on dates, and we plan on meeting with them soon.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is the consent calendar. Are there any items that any member would like to pull from the consent calendar? No items. Is there any comment from the public on the consent calendar?
There is no comment.
Thank you. I need a motion, members.
I move to pass the consent calendar.
I second.
I have a motion from Dr. Kaiser and a second from Ms. Dolby to approve the consent calendar. I need a voice vote, so starting with Ms. Dolby.
Caitlin Dolby, aye.
Kaiser, aye.
Matt Tennis, aye.
Lando, aye.
Robinson, aye. It passes five, nothing. Thank you, members. It was a very long consent calendar. For those of you that don't have a copy, we have a lot of updates on courses and things in the district that were quite lengthy. Okay, item number eight, Discussion Action Calendar Educational Services. Our first item is a discussion on the mitigating the impacts of COVID on student learning. Mr. Marshon, this item is yours.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. We're bringing to the board tonight the impacts of COVID on student learning and how we're going to mitigate the learning loss, short-term and long-term planning, and how we're going to address learning loss since the pandemic. And quite frankly, if you want, we really like to go back to when we had the campfire also. So our students have been through a lot the last three years, so we'll be going over how we're going to address the learning loss over those three years. We are going to be addressing these students' needs under the California Equity-Based Multi-Tierred System of Support. You'll be hearing MTSS from us from now, probably, and for the next 10 years, I would imagine. We believe it's a framework that we can follow. It's used up and down the state. The three things that we'll be looking under, and you'll be hearing about our three backpacks quite a bit in the next few months. One of the backpacks, first one is academic support. Second one is social-emotional support, and the third one is behavioral support. So we have three backpacks under MTSS that we'll be looking over tonight. When we go through these slides, I want to let you know that we'll be doing slides on academic support first, and then if you guys have some questions at the end of that, you can ask it then. And then we'll go through each one of those backpacks. And the next one will be social-emotional, then the third one will be behavioral support. Also want to let you know under the academic support section, we do have two of our district leadership council teachers here tonight. Felix Deluna from Chico Junior and Stephanie Kniff from Neil Dow are present on Zoom if you have any questions on how we're working through them to come up with these plans for learning loss, okay? Criteria to select students for academic support. So far, we've been using for our elementary and secondary schools, test scores from 18, 19, teacher feedback, grades from the spring of 2020 and the fall of 2020, and credit deficiency. Criteria for students for academic support continued, secondary English and math departments, administrative star reading and iReady diagnostics, elementary using multiple measures of results, and ASVAC scores over in June.
Mr. Marshon, can you clarify elementary multiple measures and results?
Mr. Sullivan.
In the elementary world, different grade levels do different assessments. So a simple example, like a first-grade student would take something called a BPST score, Basic Phonics Skills Test. And it's kind of set levels. By this point in the school year for first grade, they should score this number on it. So that kind of gives us an indicator if they're on track to be, you know, a successful reader. As they move up, we might use something called a star reading score, kind of a computerized reading inventory for fourth and fifth graders. So those would be an example of different multiple measures that we're kind of looking at to kind of monitor, just gauge progress for them.
Thank you. That makes sense. Backing up to the last slide, I'm sorry. Teacher feedback. This would be a teacher saying, I think this child here needs an extra level of support.
Yeah, they'll be doing that. There's different ways. Their teacher could give the support what they're seeing in the classroom, that this child needs more academic support, more tutoring. Maybe we can get them into one of our programs in the morning or in the lunchtime or after school. They also have their ESPIT teams that look at that and their wellness teams that the teachers bring students to. At the secondary level, it could be one teacher in one of the six classes, or it could be multiple of the teachers telling them, this child is falling behind, or we need to give them more support.
This is all COVID-specific? This is all, this is relative to COVID or to the current schedule that we're under?
It's relevant to the fact that when we've been on, one, the campfire when our students were sent home, and then, two, when it came to the pandemic, when we went from March last year, sending them home to go back online full-time, and then going online to start the school year, and then now the AMPM. But I can tell you, this is not a problem just for Chico Unified School District. This is a nation and a state problem. And that's why there's funds that the state and the national government are looking at giving us to mitigate these learning losses.
And in terms of the MTSS as an umbrella, that has been something we've been engaged in for the past five years. It's not new, but the umbrella of support will certainly help in crisis environments such as the one we're in.
I'm going to kind of pass it off now to first Ted Sullivan, then it'll be Mr. Shepherd, John Shepherd. Academic support is currently offered.
So for, kind of, this is a mix of secondary and elementary supports that are happening as we speak. Saturday session's already starting and happening at different levels, mostly in the secondary level. We have midday sessions, and that happens both secondary and elementary. So if you kind of think of that time slot between the AM version and the PM version, students are being asked to stay and kind of receive different tutoring or different supports during that time as well. We have whole-day instruction using a plus period, so it could be like a zero-period kind of concept with secondary, or similar with elementary as well. Reading Pals is something that is happening. If you don't know a lot about it, we really have a load of volunteers from the community that actually partner up with a child and come in and read. This is a very elementary-driven kind of program. They come in and read. They have kind of a scripted program, and they've been doing it for years in person. We actually have all these volunteers doing it via Zoom right now. So it's pretty cool to go watch if you ever get a chance. So those are things that are happening currently. The next slide. We are doing a pretty extensive chunk of before and after-school tutoring kinds of sessions, kind of really looking at student need and prioritizing. It's really geared at very much an academic focus with those kinds of things, not so much a childcare focus, but a very, really looking at what we can do to mitigate that learning loss and provide additional targeted instruction for those students that are needing it. We have homework club support happening. Some of the different schools have different levels of support happening. Students can stay for, say, a half hour after school with some support there in place to work on kind of the asynchronous portion of their schoolwork. Those are, that's happening at some places. And teachers are actually providing tutoring via Zoom as well in different kind of ways. I think Mr. Shepherd's going to touch base about some things we're actually working on right now with our school sites as well, unless there's more questions about those.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. So just moving forward, we have all the things that Mr. Sullivan has described that schools aren't doing all of them, but all schools are doing some of them. So I just want to clarify for elementary and secondary. And as we're moving forward to be thinking about the summer and then into next year, we will be continuing any of the items that Mr. Sullivan already described. In addition to those, however, we'll continue them if we feel like they've been successful. We are looking at summer academies, which is a little bit different than summer school. It won't be only a credit recovery situation. It would be more of a remediation intervention scenario. And I want to make sure that the board understands the difference between the two. We are looking at adding core curriculum-specific intervention classes. So for example, if we need to add an additional English class to support kids or an additional Math C, Integrated Math I course to remediate kids who have demonstrated some achievement gaps. We are also talking about different schedules. And we're excited to be talking about one-year schedules that could incorporate additional periods. And we've been working with union leadership to have those conversations. They have not made their way to negotiations. There's still some things we would need to work out, but we're having those conversations. And then we're also talking about just a simple four-to-five-week crash course that could be added to a student's schedule, either a zero period or an eighth period. So those are some of the things that we're moving towards.
Caitlin.
Thank you. Excuse me. I just wanted to address the third bullet, that embed an intervention period within the day at each secondary site. Would that be a possible, my words are escaping me, a point where a student would lose an elective class to be enrolled in an intervention class? Or would it be in addition to that?
It could actually go either way. And at times, we have intervention classes dropped in to support students who then could take an elective class their senior year. Oftentimes, seniors do not take a full six-period day because they have the extra five credits. So in this situation, the student would take that intervention class and then still be able to take an additional elective.
Yeah, so in the interest of supporting our students' social-emotional wellness, I'd like to make sure that what we're trying to prioritize, letting kids have those more elective choice creative outlets. I think that losing music or losing art or any of those, you know, other things that they're actually really passionate about is detrimental to their ability to succeed academically. So it actually has, there's research that supports that that has the negative effect. You know, by putting them in an intervention class where they would be going to art instead or music is not as effective as if they could have like an additional time period, like a zero period, some kind of plus period, and still get to go to their elective course where they do get to have their, you know, creative outlet and sort of feed their social-emotional wellness, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Yeah, these are ideas that we, we're fortunately in a situation that we're not normally in where we have funding, and now we're coming up with ideas. Usually, it's the opposite, right? Where we have ideas and are trying to find funding. So this is a really unique situation we're excited about. And just an additional ongoing, again, just trying to expand some of the programs. We would continue with Reading Pals. We were having some conversations about the 2022-23 school year and looking at a spring break academic support session. We could offer double sessions if we're in that situation again down the road. And then Oakbridge is discussing various ways to evolve. As we've seen, Oakbridge's enrollment has grown, which has really added to the unique offerings that Oakbridge has been able to offer this year, and they haven't been able to do that in the past.
Yes.
Mr. Tennis?
Summer academies. Are those on? Are those on, so for my child, would those be at my child's school? Or, or how many school sites have summer academies taking place on them?
Those kinds of scenarios, we would like to bring, you know, bring to ed services and bring to cabinet and bring to senior cabinet and bring to the board as ideas. As I said, we have the funding, we're still working out the logistics and the staffing really to be sure that we can offer everything during the summer. They could be, they could be either of those.
I think it'd be, I'll just throw out there, I think it'd be highly desirous if kids could participate in a summer academy at their school. Because just for the sake of continuity.
When we're listening to our teachers on Mondays, we have a Monday staff, not a staff meeting, an open Zoom. And we have teachers describing some of their preferences and, and what you've described, Mr. Tennis, is definitely one of them.
Ted, what do we have going on that with the elementary level?
Elementary DLC actually talked about that as well. And elementary has offered versions of this, it's kind of connected to the after school program for many years also. It's called, been called an early back in some situations, so maybe two, three weeks before the school year starts, we start inviting students back to kind of get in the school groove and some of those kinds of things. We've also extended in June historically and kind of added two, three weeks on there as well. So it's, it's something that's been happening. Like Mr. Shepherd said, we actually have a lot of available dollars now to do it and expand it in a way that we think will be real helpful.
I would like to add one more bullet that we didn't place on the, on the screen here, but we do have a special education extended school year. And it's an in-person opportunity for students to get some more, get some more support.
I have a, I have a question. You just mentioned the extended school year. At the last meeting, we approved that schedule. Is what you're talking about something beyond the schedule we already approved?
The extended school year, and Ms. Olson is here to, if I miss anything, is specifically related to special education. The summer academies we're talking about are also for general education.
Right, I, I understand that distinction. You mentioned that the extended school year wasn't on the slide. But that's something we've already approved. Are you, are you indicating that, that there's a look at continuing an extension?
No, we, we just wanted to make sure that you guys know that it, yes, it was on the agenda last time, but we wanted just to make sure you guys understand that the extended school year will be happening.
It will be.
And just to clarify, this is, this is Diane Hyden. On extended school year, that's something that's mandated, that happens every year. And so what you approved was the schedule that we're going to have this coming year. However, all of these academies and all these other resources, in the past years, we've had summer school for general ed. Special ed students that don't qualify for extended school year, many times qualify for all of these summer school opportunities and academies. Because really, every single one of the students that have special ed supports, they're really general ed students. So they have access to everything else that's happening in general ed. And this team here has been one of the most inclusive teams that I've worked with to really make sure special ed students that have those additional needs can access those programs. And we do put some special ed supports in the summer school, and we'll have those with the academies also.
Yes, thank you Diane, for that clarification too, and the IDEA and, and the, the push in to, to, because special ed are regular education students. And so thank you for that clarification. And if we can go beyond what we've already done, because there is some funding, that's something that I definitely, you know, would continue to support.
John and Ted and I work very closely in making sure that any supports that are needed for students, whether they're on five oh fours or whether they're on IEPs, those supports are also available in those other settings.
Thank you.
Just real quick, Stephanie or Felix, did you guys have anything to add along the academic supports that we're looking for at the elementary and secondary?
I didn't have anything specifically to add. I was here more just to answer questions. But I will say that at my site at least, our teachers have been very receptive to the tutoring model. We've had, we have eighteen tutoring groups that are running. And that's on top of, we have a, a learning center that was already functioning during that time. So we have another five groups running during that time. And so we have a total of a hundred and eleven students attending our tutoring sessions right now. So I also just wanted to say that it was kind of a testament to, like, the, the clear lines of communication from the district office through DLC and then back to the teachers on site in order to get that tutoring program up and running in the short time period that we did. So I think so far, it's just been pretty well received, and we're excited to be doing it.
And Stephanie is Title One teacher over at Neil Dow.
Thank you. Mr. Tennis?
Thank you. So in terms of accessing these services, if there's a family who feels that their child would benefit from the tutoring sessions, we didn't mention parent. You know, parents identifying a need for that. Is there a process by which a parent, not a staff member, could say, I think that my child needs, you know, these tutoring sessions and so forth?
I think if a parent is interested to find out more about it, they could talk with teacher or principal at a school site. I will say, the tutoring programs, just kind of out of the list of other things on here, are really very academically focused. So they're going to look at a child's academic scores and kind of look and see where they fit into the different groups that are happening. And if a student is significantly above grade levels, an example, that parent may hear that the groups that are happening right now may not be a good match for their needs with those things also. So it's not so much that everybody can access, that they're really targeted and kind of bound by the number of groups we can be offering right now. I think we're hoping to keep offering more and more groups as we have some funding to do those kinds of things and as people feel more comfortable with it and kind of see the value in it. But it's, it's really not open to all necessarily. It's open to those that the school is kind of looking at in that MTSS structure that Superintendent Sally was talking about, to see who has needs and how can we meet those needs right there with a real academic focus. And then once again, they're just talking academics here, there's other kinds of, there is a Tina and Diane will talk about later.
Thank you. So the tutoring occurs during, in between the AM and the PM? Is that, because I've got it right there?
It could happen before the session or it could happen after the session, correct?
Before, as in in the morning, before school starts?
Uh huh, yes.
Okay, or in the middle?
Yep.
Or possibly at the end?
Correct.
And this is funded through?
Our CARES Act dollars?
Our CARES Act dollars. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Tom?
This kind of rolls right into my question, which is, do, well, I have a couple of questions. First, do we have a number of, do we know how many students we can support with these academic programs? Do we know, have a number we're shooting at? I heard a hundred and eleven, was that just for the Neil Dow site?
That was just for Neil Dow.
Okay.
I, I checked with the principals, I'd say almost all the elementary schools, and I know secondary is kind of running right in line with those things. They have anywhere from eight groups to ten groups at some sites, up into the twenties at other school sites. So I think Neil Dow is kind of right in par with lots of other places in what's happening with those things.
I guess overall, given, I know we're kind of still looking at exactly how we're going to address learning loss moving forward, but do we have a target for how many students we'd like to see in these programs and what we'll have this capacity to support?
I, I think for us, Tom, I always kind of call it the smorgasbord of services. And we want to kind of see how many different student needs there are in that academic vein. And the more kind of options we can put up on that board to target those needs, the better off we're going to be. So I think really, we're limited by more just staff and us looking for ways. And I will say, principals are pretty good recruiters, everything from being able to get instructional aids and maybe have a teaching credential also and recruiting them into it, or getting student teachers to get them to get their emergency credential and become viable to become a tutor also. So that's really become part of the principal job right now, is going out and becoming kind of a recruiter and getting people to kind of fill those slots so that we can keep augmenting those slots and have more spaces for kids to get help.
Thank you.
Additional staff, I'm sorry.
So just to kind of work off of Tom there, the capacity piece, I think, is the, the bigger question. So do we know, do we have like a estimate about what the capacity could be? You know, we're constrained by the amount of space that we can, you know, house our students at a distance right now. So do we have an idea of like what our max capacity is under those constraints?
Sure, I think, I mean, kind of being the outlier extreme possibility. If every teacher was open to tutor kind of four sessions per day, you would take the number of teachers at that site, multiply it times four, and there's kind of four different options during the course of a school day right now, in the AM PM model, that we could be offering tutoring supports to students. So that would be kind of a, you know, extreme max, kind of fully loaded, everybody's in and kind of slotted in with all those kinds of things like that. And the group sizes are going to vary also, of course. If it's a real struggling student, they might be working in a group of two or three students. If it's a little, a student that doesn't quite have that high level of need, there might be five or six students in that group kind of working on things also.
So I had a question actually earlier for either you or John. John, you, I have a quote that I didn't quite catch all the way, but you kind of said something about like not all schools are doing all of these, but some schools are, you know, I, I misquote, I miswrote it. So I just was wondering the constraints for that, or if it's just because we're offering autonomy at each site? So each site's needs are slightly different? Or is there a challenge that, that needs to be met by some kind of action?
For elementary, Caitlin, I can't see John, so maybe I cut him off, and I apologize. It's both of those. I mean, we have some capacity issues at school sites. Some schools have more open spaces, depending on the size and how full those schools are. So I think that's, it's both of those things, really.
And when we're, when you, you mentioned the word autonomy, we are really trusting our targeted case managers who are doing a wonderful job of reaching out to their, to their parents and their students, our wellness counselors, the wellness teams, the counselors themselves, working with their admin to identify what the site's specific needs may be. For example, in one site, it might be math C. At another site, it might be an emphasis in English. And so the goal is to provide virtually a, a menu of options, knowing that we have generous funding to, to support those.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there weren't any like self-imposed constraints where we could be serving more students but aren't for various reasons.
Some of the constraints, I think Caitlin too, is having enough staff to cover what we need. Might not be the facilities, but we need to also have staff available. Like Mr. Sullivan says, we're tapping into our aides right now that have credentials, substitutes that have credentials doing these tutorials because we don't have enough staff that are working for, for various reasons. So that's another one of our constraints right now, is making sure we have enough bodies to cover these students.
And space can also be a constraint. If we want to add, say, at the secondary sites, we want to have kids be able to go in the PM. If they're an AM student, go in the PM and have a study hall, get help, get support, get tutoring. We have to have space to do that. And some of our schools are more crowded than others, especially when the teachers are teaching in, in both elementary and secondary. They are in their classroom all day long. For the teachers, it's a full day, for the kids, it's a half day. So that's where space becomes an issue.
So back on the numbers.
Mr. Tennis, yes?
I'm sorry, the numbers, a hundred and eleven at Neil Dow, but I didn't get a general sense of how many kids are participating district wide in the, in the CARES Act tutoring sessions?
I, I would say, in the elementary world, a hundred and eleven, roughly speaking, times the twelve schools. We're all doing pretty comparable right now, so I'd say that's a pretty mid-level number. Neil Dow is kind of a mid-level sized school. So I think just off the top of my head, I know McManus has more than that going on, and I know a couple of their schools have a few less than that going on. So I'd say a nice ballpark figure would be a hundred and ten, a hundred to a hundred and ten per school is, is a pretty safe number to go with.
And then on the outside, at the outside potential capacity, I didn't hear you actually say a number associated with that.
Yeah, I would say if you think each school's got X number of teachers, that teacher could teach a before school group, a before AM group, a post AM group, a pre PM group and a post PM group. So it's a number of teachers at that site times four groups each. So if a school site had fifteen teachers, they could be running sixty tutorial sessions conceivably. And that's once again, running at like a hundred percent capacity, everything staffed, kind of the, the, everything's meeting together in a perfect little structure to make it all work that way.
And how long do they last for, the sessions?
They're roughly a half hour, some are slightly longer, but they're all about a half hour.
Ms. Dolby?
Yeah, just for the record, when we're talking about teachers teaching all day and, and filling in these tutoring sessions too, which I believe are paid, right? Am I understanding that correctly? So the teachers and staff are and have been teaching on campus all day, every workday this whole school year, right? Teachers aren't having half days and they aren't working from home. Everybody is on campus working for the full day, all day.
When we were online, they actually did their A T goodness time at home in the afternoon. When we are completely online, they were not at school all day. But when we went to AM PM, they're on school campus all day. The elementary runs two, two hour blocks with their kids, an AM for two hours and a PM for two hours. And so they do have a little time in that in between. And yes, we pay, that's during their prep time, so we pay them per diem to work those tutorial sessions.
So teachers are actually teaching more hours than they're contracted for in their regular contract. They're teaching above and beyond, for pay, but you know, beyond what's usually contracted at this time.
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're, they're being paid for what's in the MOU right now for the, for the contract? And then we're paying them above the MOU that we've?
That's correct, yeah. They're, they're working extra time outside the normal workday, their prep time or before school starts or after school starts and, and are getting paid for that.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, like, any possible misconception that, that staff is not working at capacity or over their, you know, normal working capacity. And I think that this is a good part of the conversation, I think, to plug that in. Thank you.
Mr. Tennis?
So, thank you Caitlin for bringing this up. Am I getting the right impression that teachers who participate in these CARES Act tutoring sessions that we're having because of the AM PM model are actually getting paid more to do their job now than they were getting paid when we were on a traditional schedule?
They're, they're being paid to work extra in the same vein that like a coach may be getting paid to work extra. Or sometimes at a secondary level, if a teacher is out and they need to have a teacher cover their prep period because they couldn't find a sub, that teacher gets compensated to cover that prep period. So they're kind of working in that same vein. So yet, they're, they're getting paid more, but they're doing more work also.
It's much more common in secondary for a teacher to work during their prep period because it happens every day. Or in elementary school, it doesn't happen every day, except now during AM PM, they get a prep time every day. But that's something that's unique because we're in a special schedule. So, but secondary, as Ted said, is, it's not uncommon for teachers to work six fifths and they get paid extra for working during that prep period.
Don't they need the prep time that they've lost in theory?
They, they would be doing that later on in the day, maybe at four o'clock.
Right.
Is what's happening. And, and I would say typically at an elementary school, there's, there's different tutoring programs that are happening typically. I would say those teachers have historically maybe done it from seven forty-five to eight fifteen in the morning before a school session or two thirty to three fifteen or three thirty. So this is just giving us a time to augment that and provide more of it. So those teachers could have been doing tutoring structure even pre COVID. And that was something that would happen, we're just happening, it's, it's happening a lot more right now.
It seems like that might create a disincentive for teachers whose opinions we are leaning on heavily with respect to our school schedule to, to actually want to go back. I'll just say that by way of commentary.
Yeah, so I'm just going to clarify, as a teacher who's worked six fifths several years in my career, and, and what is traditional in this profession is that, and I'm, and I just, just to paint the picture for you, because if you're not in it, you don't really know. You know, we all think we know what, what teachers do and how they live because we've been students in a classroom before. But basically, about one hour's worth of teaching, it requires one to two hours of prep time and assessment time. Emails, phone calls, prepping the materials, planning, all those things. So when you're talking about a teacher having to engage in teaching with their students for an extra hour in the day, that, that work time has to go somewhere else. And so it gets displaced towards outside of contracted working hours. So teachers already work outside of those contracted working hours to do all those extra things, to do emails and phone calls and grade and lesson plan and respond to students at, you know, ten PM or whatever. But to be compensated just, just for their time to be engaging with students, it displaces the time that they would be normally using during their prep hour to, to be doing that prep work. So it's not like they're double dipping, it's like overtime.
I just want to add too, as a, as a former principal, it was often difficult to find teachers that were willing to do six fifths at the high school level. So it's, it's, it's not something that all, every teacher is interested in doing. They're, they're typically doing it for financial reasons. For example, they have a student that now is in college or something because it is, it is a lot more work and it is a lot of effort to work that extra time. So it's not something that teachers stand in line to volunteer for. At high school, I've had to look high and low sometimes to, to fill those slots. And I'm, I'm sure John, as a former high school principal, has experienced the same thing.
Absolutely, and oftentimes, people will do it because they realize it really helps kids. If they take that period over, because if they don't, then those kids don't have If they take that period over, because if they don't, then those kids don't have that schedule. They don't have that one class that now can't be offered if there isn't someone to teach it. So teachers are willing to do that.
And I can really see again, as a junior high principal, our teachers who taught six fifths, and I would have to really go talk to them because we would, a lot of times we didn't have a lot of choice and they knew that. And what Mr. Shepherd's saying is they would step up for us to teach that six fifths. But by the time that ended that year come around, they're pretty exhausted, um, and, um, and having going from a typical two hundred and seventy-five kids to, to two oh five or two ten, um, it does make a difference. And so we as an administrators really had to watch those teachers to make sure that we weren't burning them out year after year. So I just wanted to, it, it does wear on them. Okay, so we're going to move on to, uh, the next backpack was our social emotional supports currently in place. Um, and again, we want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students, um, socially, emotionally. And so I'm going to start out with, uh, Diane Olson. She's going to go over the first slide.
Actually, I'll go over the next five slides if that's okay.
You can do that. I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Marshawn. Okay, so I get to unpack that, uh, next backpack of the social emotional learning and supports. We're going to start with, um, what's current in place. Uh, social, social emotional learning and supports for the emotional health of our students has been a focus for Chico Unified, and we have developed programs to build resilience for our students. There are social emotional learning and supports that have been in, have a history of having been in place and implemented to support the students and families experience, um, experiencing adverse childhood experiences and trauma due to natural disasters. And then those, um, those events that happen that we have to respond to quickly. Um, and so these have been in place, um, for this year due to COVID, some of them. Some of them have been in place much longer. Um, I'm not going to read these all to you, but, um, we do, um, right now, one of the first things we thought of is connecting this to the learning loss, was that, um, late work and understanding that some students are going to need extended time based on the, the situation that we're in. And so we, there are, um, extended due dates and timelines for students. We have additional staff working to support students to get that work in. Um, we do offer supports to families, um, with referrals to agencies. We call that agency leakage work. Um, we utilize Calvin to create daily check-ins. And so this is a randomized, a random di-mized survey at school site level um, that's pushed out ma, uh, automatically to their Chromebooks. And then, uh, students respond to these questions. And right now, we, most school sites are putting in an extra question of, do you need to talk to an adult? And, um, that immediately goes to the counselor and the administrator if they say yes. And we have staff going straight to that class the next day or immediately after those surveys are pushed out. And pulling kids out, talking to them, um, asking those critical screener questions of, of, um, what may be going on and what they're concerned about. And then they, many times it's just a conversation. The child needs an adult just to talk to outside of the classroom. Sometimes it's a referral to other, uh, agencies or other resources. Going on to, um, page eleven, um, the lunch bunch is a lunchtime thing that happens, um, primarily at elementary to start building some student relationships, building friendships. This has been around for years for students that struggle to make, um, friendships. And it's been expanded now to really create that time that they can interact with each other. Um, wellness, um, counselors, these are teams that review students', um, struggles and their needs. They work together as a community on, a team on the school sites to identify plans to support student success. And those have been, become really crucial during this time during COVID and through the fires, the dam, uh, experience and other things that have occurred. Um, securely is a screener that catches students who are using their Chromebooks to search out, um, things that, for example, might be looking for ways to harm themselves. And you heard a little bit of this from John Vincent last, uh, month. So I'm not going to go too deeply into it, but it does look for things that, uh, trigger bullying, self-harm and violence. And then we can immediately go in and support those students in those areas. Um, and, uh, CARESOL, as you've heard a lot about already, that's a referral program that we use. Um, and that refers any student, any family, any staff member can access that. And, and they help connect them to social emotional supports through counseling. And it could be anything from behavioral health for families that have Medicare. They have resources for families with no insurance and no income, all the way to families that have insurance, and they make, help make those connections. And then we added Equity Alliance in the social emotional supports area. Because that Equity Alliance, and John talked a little bit about this at a previous meeting too, is really focusing on those student groups that have not always been, um, part of the central culture. And so we are working really hard to bring these Equity Alliances so that students are able to, um, advocate for themselves, be, build relationships, be part of the community and see themselves as successful. And, and hoping to build on that to create more academic and social emotional health and success. Going on to slide twelve, um, some of the things that we've added in this year because of events that have happened is, um, we have done professional development. One of the biggest ones that we've done was the Living and Work Suicide Prevention. Living Works is a well-recognized nationwide curriculum. We offered that to all of our secondary staff, not just teachers. Uh, many of the administrators did this training also. Um, we are also looking at providing that at the, um, secondary level to, um, students because they do have a student component of that. Zones of Regulation is, uh, strategies for teachers to use when they see students with, um, challenging behaviors that are be, because of some of these, this trauma that they've experienced. And the Zones of Regulations also teaches children to use some strategies on their own. So it, it helps both teachers and students to learn those strategies. Nurtured at Heart has been around for a long, long time, and the nurtured heart approach is about recognizing the greatness in every single one of you and every one, single one of us and every single one of our students. And so many of our schools have adopted nurtured heart across the way. Um, there are additional, I, in fact, we just did a nurtured heart refresher course part of the district-wide staff development day. Um, again, PD, that counselors providing training for bullying, suicide prevention and human trafficking, that's been in place for quite a while. Elementary counselors this year, um, really said, you know, we need to bring suicide awareness all the way down to elementary level. So they've developed, based on what's happening at secondary, they've taken it and brought it down to the elementary level. Um, we've been doing, um, intervention training on behavior. We've done a lot of those in the, um, district-wide staff developments. We've also done them in some summer trainings, um, and counselors are trained in what's called Second Step. That's a social emotional curriculum that meets the needs of students' grades K through twelve. Um, right now, we have it really focused in elementary. Junior high is, um, really doing some groups with that and doing a lot with it. And then at high school, they're just looking at that now. Um, again, going in page thirteen, um, we also have, um, I, I want to, on this slide, really talk about some of the people that we have in place to support all of this. And those are our counselors that are across the board, elementary through high school. Uh, we have the elementary counseling assistants that do a lot. We have targeted case managers. We have psychologists. We have, um, wellness counselors and at-risk counselors, um, that have been in place. This year, we actually added at-risk counselors, um, with a grant, and so that's being taken care of. Um, and we have a continuum at the elementary level of, um, social emotional learning that starts in kindergarten with what we call kimochi, where they start learning words about, uh, feelings and emotion and how to identify them. Going on to toolbox where they're given tools to learn about those emotions and to use, like the one I'm using right now, the deep breathing tool. And then the, uh, second step goes after that and on through, um, uh, secondary. And then the targeted play, that's the elementary counselors, they really play a pivotal role in the elementaries to, um, use play as a tool for learning to get along, to feel success and to be part of their school community. Um, the elementary counselors do a lot of counseling groups. So going on from there, we're going to talk about kind of that additional expansion. We want to keep everything we have in place. We want to refine it at the secondary level. We have a very refined program at the elementary level. We want to get the, um, the, the, um, plan in place at secondary where they have a more structured, um, format. Challenge between secondary and elementary is elementary, we have a cop, um, a captive audience in one classroom. So you can pull out pieces of day in every classroom, because at secondary, they are periods by periods. It's harder to, um, pull them out all at the same time, give everyone the same thing. So it's more targeted based on some of that risk screeners that we're putting in place, which is that edgy climber piece on the slide. Um, Calvin again, coming back. We want to expand that. Right now, schools are using it at, um, as they put it out, but we want to start pushing it out district-wide into the next year. And that Equity Alliance, we see that as a really good tool for building, um, the supports and the strength and of our student groups that, um, are a little bit more diversified and, um, not, you know, have been sometimes on the outskirts and not been as successful. Um, then they are, are supporting our diverse student groups and they're building relationships with them and helping students to improve student success and out, um, outcomes. So I went through that really fast and I talked really fast. See if you have any questions?
Hey, just real quick, I want to add on, um, sorry Caitlin, I just want to add on, Ms. Staley and I and John Shepherd and Ted Sullivan go around and talk to our students in, at different LCAP student meetings to see what we need to do better. And one of the things we, we talked about is the social emotional, what we want to do. We got a great suggestion from a Chico junior student. Um, he said, instead of us going into the office and asking for counseling help and signing up on a clipboard and sitting in a chair while everybody stares at you, wondering why you want to see a counselor? Is there any way that we could get something on our computer where we can just push a button? And that will trigger us to get support from a counselor to come to us? And so we go ding ding. I mean, uh, so what we did, what I do very well is I turned to John Vincent and, and Erica Smith and say, so how can we do this? Um, they worked together, collaborated, and they figured out how we could do this during, through our Catapult W TIP system. So now our students will be able to go on, um, they're putting it in place. Um, Erica's working with Catapult now to figure out, we're going to put that in place. So it'll be right on their Chromebook in the, so they'll be able to ask for support just by pushing a button. They could say academic support or emotional support from their counselor. So again, that was just another way we were able to go to a student and a student gave us an idea. And then our staff was able to figure out how to make that happen for them.
And Jay, thank you for reminding me of that because another thing that I didn't mention is our librarians came to us with an idea too. And they wanted to add, um, social emotional literature, um, about trauma, about stress, about how to reduce that or stories of other people that have gone through it and, and been resilient through it. And so all of our libraries have now added this curriculum into their checkout system. So that is available to students on an as-needed basis they can go into.
Um, thank you. Uh, we have, uh, one speaker. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I thought the board had finished. No, Will, Caitlin?
Hi. Um, so many, uh, so many thoughts while you're presenting, um, because I, I can tell that you're passionate about, about this, Diane. And I think that we, we all are really passionate about this. Um, uh, just because it's fresh in my head, um, Jay, do, that, for that, um, that potential increase in need for students who now they have more of the opportunity to reach out anonymously, I would be, are we anticipating a possible increase in need for staff to be available for students?
Uh, we, we see that there's a need, but we just, one thing we have to do is this money, this CARES Act dollars are, are one-time money. And so when we go out to hire new bodies, more counseling, it's only going to be for a short period of time. And then they're going to, because we're going to run out of that money, the one-time money. So we are adding more time, just like we are for our teachers and stuff like that. We're, we're trying to build in more time so we can meet the, the counseling need for our students. We'll continue to look at the grants that we're getting for our wellness counselors. And we do have some dollars to push out for that. We were, right now, they only have them possibly at halftime at some of our staff. We'll look to add those wellness counselors as full-time. Um, and then we're also trying to look at ways to getting more counseling support, techs, so we can free up more of our secondary counselors in the future to give emotional support and not just academic support.
Yeah, and I think that there's a concern about using one-time money for those kinds of programs. But I, I really feel like if we do an awesome, amazing job now and get those programs started and, and can have results that we can show, you know, uh, quantitatively, um, that'll get us more grants. You know, I think that that will really lead to more money to be available for the, these types of programs.
And I, and I extremely agree with you because at one point when we just wrote the grant, we only had enough money for our three high schools to have halftime, um, wellness counselors. Now every junior high has at least a halftime. Some of them have full-time and some of, uh, I know one of our high school has a full-time and the other two have a halftime. So we have increased that time and I'm hoping again, showing that it is working, that, um, and that we have wonderful grant writers. And, um, my understanding is Liz is just going to keep working for free. But, uh, and supporting.
I like that idea.
Yeah, that we can continue, because this money is available Caitlin, and that's why we, we've done a pretty good job of, of searching and getting that money. And we will continue to try to get that money. So we're paying it through grant money and not general fund dollars. Um, but again, if we think that something is working, then obviously that we'll come back with our LCAP dollars and figure if that's a need that we need to go to. Like we did, I don't know, like four or five years ago with the elementary counselors, adding them. We knew that was a need, so we took that into our LCAP dollars. And so that's again, a board and community decision on how we increase that, the time for them.
All right, Diane, back to you. I, um, appreciate your, your presentation. I didn't want to interrupt you, um, but I do have a, lots of bullet points.
That's okay.
Yeah, okay. Um, and these are just like for clarification or just to get a better idea. Um, the first one I had was, um, the supports that we were already doing pre-COVID, are those still in place at the same capacity as they were pre-COVID, or have we increased any of those efforts yet?
It depends on what it is. For example, um, at the elementary counselors and, and counseling assistants, they were doing, um, kimochi and then toolbox and then second step, and they were going in weekly to every class. And because we had a full day, they were able to do that. Right now, they're pushing in through Zoom when they can, or they're creating Zoom groups. So they might not be getting that specific strategy as frequently. However, they have expanded what they do with their, um, structured play for identified groups and, and some other things. So there's some give and take there. I do have to say that many of the counselors and counseling assistants are feeling a little bit overwhelmed because of how much they're having to do more to reach out to students. But when we talk about some of the things like what the TCMs do, the targeted case managers, that's been way expanded. That, we've really put a lot on their shoulders to build these connections with families, to contact families and to bring the information back and then get their wellness team or their counselors on board to address the specific needs. So it, it really depends on what group you're tar, talking about and where their, um, interventions were built into the day.
Yeah, I think that we could probably, well, and totally disagree with me if I'm wrong. Um, but if we have these targeted interventions at the elementary level, that will pay off in dividends in the long run, right? So we would really want to, at the very least, expand those programs. So, I mean, would it be appropriate for us to maybe look into increasing our capacity for our targeted case managers, adding more if possible, um, or more support for them if possible? Um, and, uh, and, uh, just the more, more people for the, or hours for the check-ins, you know, uh, if they could even do more in person rather than on Zoom. I'm just kind of babbling here, but, um, I envision, I envision more adult intervention for our kids on a social emotional basis, right?
Right.
Um, because kids aren't going to learn. It does not going to matter how many interventions, academic interventions we do if they're not okay, you know, on the inside. So, um, that's that foundational piece, right? Our social emotional wellness is the foundation to, to our behavior and our academics. So if we're not supporting that, if we're not putting all of our investment there first, then the rest of it's going to kind of, you know, collapse and not be the biggest, you know, it won't work to the greatest capacity.
Yeah, so social emotional health is a, a funny little thing that's within us. And for each of us, it takes something different to build that wealth of social emotional, um, strength. And for some of us, it does take people from the outside coming in. Some of us, it just takes getting. Some of us, it just takes getting an A on a test. And, and so really academics can be a social emotional support applied correctly. And these other interventions that go in and target specific things that we're seeing. And what you mentioned at the elementary level, really targeting, teaching students how to use tools for when they're mad, angry, how to identify when they're mad, angry, frustrated, anxious. And so, um, I think I do agree at elementary, we really need to focus in and give them all the tools we can then because they can carry those on. But I do think that it's the, those groups of people that I listed before that are doing those things. But I really do think our teachers develop a relationship.
Oh, yeah.
When you think about the 4D assets, teachers are one of the groups in that asset. You guys are part of those assets for every student, you know. So you have to look at all those assets and how can we increase assets? Counselors and TCMs and counseling assistants, they can build linkages to other agencies, to churches, to people like the Equity Alliance. Now we've increased assets. Now we've increased their real level of support because they can carry those assets with them forever.
Yeah, I definitely want to see those on some kind of spending menu for us to, to, to talk about how we can increase the capacity in that regard.
Yeah, I, I think there's a lot of things that can be done. I think that was the point I, and so once we have all that and Ed Services brings together, these are the things that can be done to support students and, and grow students. Then bringing that to you and, and what your priorities are and following the priorities that you have set aside for us, then we'll have a direction to go.
Great, thank you so much. Um, I, really the rest is, they're small things that, that's, that's probably.
I would just encourage us to realize that a lot of these small tutoring groups that started two weeks ago, those interactions are actually very emotionally supportive.
Right.
Especially when they're picking the things for the kids to read and dealing with the kids. It's, it's a real positive group process.
Successful events.
That's next.
Help mitigate.
That's next.
Um, painful experiences. So yes, I, I agree with that.
Mr. Tennis?
Um, I'm glad to see we're focused on suicide as a concern, an area of concern. Are you aware of any data about what's going on with, with suicide with, in our student population? I mean, is there?
For Chico Unified?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there an uptick in, in suicide ideation, um, you know, admissions to, to the hospital regarding, you know, monitoring or anything like that that you're aware of?
Okay, so the number of students that are going through to, um, the hospital check-in through that manner, whether it be behavioral health, um, emergency crisis situations, there is a slight uptick. It's, it's not quite equal to what the pandemic has done. But that uptick for Bu County has been steadily going with all of the trauma we, we've had and the increase in homelessness since the dam event. That was, really was our first little event. And so, yes, we do have an uptick now. Do I see it based on what comes across my desk? Because I'm the one that gets the psychologists, the counselors and everyone together whenever there's an emergency of that type. The response teams that I've had to get together is about the same as any other year. However, we have more students at that teetering point. I guess that, that would be the analysis right there is that emergency response is about the same as in any year. But the number of students that are in that near crisis situation is higher.
What do you base that on Diane?
The number of responses we've had to have to behavioral health during crisis and the number of, um, attempts.
So in a, our population, which is, uh, what, thirteen thousand, ten thousand, three hundred, what, what is it?
Twelve thousand.
So there are more of those kids who have made attempts?
There's a couple more kids that have made those attempts, but it's, some of those kids have had multiple attempts.
Is there any way that we can quantify this? Is there any data set that we could look at and hold in our hand?
Yeah, I haven't asked for that, but that's a good point. I could, I can work with Tim and we can get that information through, um, some of the referral information that's put in. I can't give you names or anything like that. I can't even give you what schools they're at because it's such a small population. But I would be able to say district wide, this is what we've had so far.
I definitely want that information. Thank you.
Tom?
Hey there. Um, I have a couple of questions. The first is that, um, we know that schools give students a real sense of identity in place. And one of my biggest qualms about the amount of online learning and distance learning we're doing is how to build that sense of community in place. Do we have anything in place specifically to just make our, you know, site-based offline students still feel like they're part of the school community?
I think it's going to be more of a Ted and John question?
Well, I can speak to secondary and clubs are active. We just had, I just saw a tweet that came out this morning from Chico High School that CSF dues are, should be coming in. Athletics is starting to creep forward. We do have, uh, teachers organizing independently, just doing it on their own, Zoom sessions with students just to get them together. And they're offering those opportunities before school, um, at lunch and after school. So it's not just academic intervention, it's really the social emotional intervention as well.
Do we have any data on virtual student participation in clubs? Is that about the same as the virtual student participation, uh, you know, percentage of the school population? Or is, my guess would be that those students would, would be engaging in clubs at a lower rate?
Yeah, I, I don't have any data here in front of me. Uh, I do know that, um, the outreach is there, but you're right, you know. How can we recruit those kids to be more social? Because those are the students that we're, um, we're targeting with some of the, some of these conversations.
I think elementary doesn't have the same kind of, um, structure as far as clubs and those kinds of things. I, the example I hear a lot from teachers is I ask what they're doing. Lunch bunch is kind of the fallback. A lot of them actually invite their online students and their in-person students to, to really have lunch with them on a real daily basis even, some of them. So they actually are getting every kid in that class together for twenty minutes during lunch, letting them chat, play games with each other in kind of Google hangouts. And the teacher's in there kind of monitoring it and kind of seeing what's going on also with it. And I'd say that's a very typical, common experience for most elementary classes right now.
Thank you. Um, if I may, there's one more point I wanted to address, which was simply that, um, at the secondary, at the primary level, it sounds like we're really working to build in social emotional supports and tools. Whereas at secondary level, uh, well, I'm very glad that students have the ability to push a button, say, hey, I'd like some help. There are so many students who won't. I mean, uh, speaking from personal experience, I would never have admitted in high school that I need help and I needed help. So how do we reach to those kids? What do we do in terms of pushing or actually, uh, creating some curriculum? That's, we don't really do home rooms about, uh.
Well, the first step is identification, right? Identifying students or working through different channels, looking at different metrics that could, um, could identify students that might need some more support. And then once that identification takes place, providing the student-specific supports. We do have general curriculum, for example, coincidentally soon, um, we have a state mandated California Youth, or Healthy Youth Act curriculum that'll be coming out, Positive Prevention Plus. The key, as you've, as you've pressed, is identifying those students and making sure that they know that there are resources available. And I'm going to go back to what Ms. Dolby said earlier. It's really at the secondary level, it's all about relationships. The students know that a targeted case manager or a counselor or a teacher or an instructional aide or an administrator or a front office staff person is there to support him or her. And looking at attendance, looking at grades, looking at, um, different metrics can identify students.
Yeah, I just want to say that EduClimber, um, program that we have kind of puts all that data into one data set for us. So if, if a student's grades start to all of a sudden fall and all of a sudden their attendance starts to fall, it, what it does is it'll start tracking that instead of us looking at, our counselors looking at different things, our teachers looking at different things, it will put it all together. And it starts tracking students for our counselors and our teachers to let them know, hey, Jimmy's grades or Johnny's grades just started to fall. And, and by the way, he's starting to miss a lot of school lately. Or we're seeing that he's been alone lately. So we, EduClimber will start tracking those students that are better, are tracked for us. Also the Kelvin surveys, it'll give them more autonomy, anonymous to plug, I, I need to help. And again, not just the button on the computer, but we all have some surveys that basically addition one or two questions and, for them. Also, we just purchased new social emotional curriculum, our, um, one of our, the PV librarian, what's her name?
Katie Sargentson?
Katie Sargent, she just came and requested more social emotional curriculum and it's K-12. And so she pushed it out first for secondary, but then she started meeting with the elementary librarians. And so they'll be, be doing more school-wide through the counselors and the librarians, so social emotional curriculum. Again, Tom, you're, you're correct. Ten years ago, this stuff wasn't out there. There's so much more of it now because of the need of our students. And even before the pandemic, we saw the needs and that's why we got the wellness counselors in because our, our students were starting to struggle, not just in our district, but in the state nationwide.
Yeah, and I'll add to that, Tom, in that, um, we do have screeners that, um, we do mental health screeners. And it's a real simple four-question survey that's done in person. It's not done with everyone because we don't have the capacity to do that. But we're, we're looking at ways to, um, expand that. But that's all of our athletes and our 10th grade students all get that screener. So we're looking at ways to expand that and keep it within district. And then, um, to your point of when I was in high school, you were in high school, we didn't seek that out. Number one, we didn't, we didn't have this training. We, it wasn't part of our life. When we started having events in this district, it was students that had the most provocative letters about how they want to be able to just go to the website and see that button to push. And yes, we will look at it. And that addition to the back of their ID cards that has all of the, um, resources for suicide prevention and, and the phone numbers, um, that's one thing that wasn't in here. We, thanks to, um, and is she here? Erica, all of our websites have, um, the social emotional resources that are accessible to both parents and students. And, um, Catapult also has anonymous reporting. And that goes straight to all of us in, in Ed Services and to site administrators, to the counselors, for them to immediately respond to those. So students are better at that than you or I would have been. You know, they, they are aware and they're aware of their friends needing help. And that's part of what all the suicide prevention training is about too, is looking at yourself, but also looking at your friends and, and helping them.
I, I put myself on the list, so I get to, I get to, I get to talk next. When Kamala Harris, remember her? Was, um, our California, uh, State Attorney General. One of the, one of the things that she pushed out during her term was statistics on the success rate of students graduating and how you could determine it by looking at their attendance rate between the grades of kindergarten and third grade. And what Chico Unified did after seeing those statistics was about eight years ago, I think, we brought through our, um, LCAP process, um, set aside for, um, getting help at the kindergarten, second, third, first, second, third grade to, um, begin to treat what we were, were seeing as the impact of missing just one day a month. And, and finding out what's the cause, what can we do about it? And, and everything fell into place after that. We, we are one of the highest ACEs rate counties in the state. We began to look at programs like restorative justice. We began to give toolboxes to our, our kids and teachers because of the in-services and things. And what we did with our LCAP was put those first dollars behind social emotional support and wellness in our kiddos when they were i- in the grades where they needed the tools to be able to survive. And the, um, outgrowth of that is that our suspension rates went down, our attendance rates went up. Our student graduation rates continued to go up. And as we've seen these successes, we have continued to add all of the things you've just laid out here before us tonight. And so we, I know Kathy and I have both been here long enough to see the results of, of the, the light bulb going off ten or twelve years ago and, and being able to support that. And so if, if we can continue to look at how can we use some of the dollars, like Caitlin said, that are, that are here in front of us, that it, it may be that, that we, you know, we have to be careful because of the one-time dollar issue. But th- this is where our responsibility is to our families. It's, it's helping kids survive. And the ones that get help, um, that need it are, are soaring. I, you know, just look at some of the, um, well, look at the football player that makes things soar. But no, just, just being a whole human being and being successful and happy, even with, you know, our incredible now rates of homelessness. Anyway, I'm, I'm done, but yeah.
Thanks to our board that we in Chico Unified are really ahead of the curve in this area. There are so many districts I talk to or call and ask about what we're doing. Or we'll get students that come here with their families and, and they're like, you have elementary counselors? No one in the state has that. You have targeted case managers across every school. No one, the board has supported this area to where we actually had a baseline in place that helped support us through what we're going on now. And that's why I do think that while we have an uptick in events, of student, um, attempts and things like that, I think it would have been much higher had we not already had a baseline of support prior to any of the natural disasters that were happening four, four years ago.
Okay, I'm, under the point, yes, I'm, I need to ask if the board has any more questions of anyone before we take our speaker?
Yeah, just one more. Um, it was on my list. I, I kind of glazed over it. But, uh, Mr. Lando made a good point and that was reinforced over here, which is, uh, relationships, especially at the secondary level because, you know, as teachers, they only see their students for fifty minutes at a time each day. Those relationships still do build and we definitely have a, a good understanding of where our students are at on any given day for the most part. But at the elementary level, there is more of an opportunity, especially right now in this AMPM model where there's less students in the classroom for that, those connections to be made and the, the identification of those needs, uh, a little bit more expeditiously at the elementary level. Where I'm going with this is if there is any kind of consideration being given, I don't think that it would be possible to do it this year. It'd be too big of a, a, a change. Not really a change, but yeah, I guess it'd be a change. But to look into, um, some kind of, uh, program like Inspire does or Marsh Junior High does with a, like some kind of advisory class, which is, you know, an adult to check in with. It's like homeroom, but it would be for social emotional stuff and for, you know, culture building on campus stuff, you know, the fun activities that, that we do. You know, even if it was just thirty minutes a day to check in where that teacher knows that that's their kids and, and sometimes they're challenging, but sometimes you get to do fun stuff with them too, you know. Just something to, to consider maybe for next year, um, to provide that opportunity, like you said. They don't have the time to necessarily check in because they're always in classes and you don't want to necessarily pull them out of their classes and miss academic time. So maybe if we were able to build in a, like a thirty-minute block and maybe reach out to Inspire and Marsh and see how they do it and, and kind of explore that as an option for that relationship building piece at the secondary level.
You must have been a fly on the wall in our Ed Services meeting because this is exactly the type of things that we've been talking about over the past couple of months is, is how can we adjust schedules? And I know John's been toying with some ideas. It's not simple of saying, here, here's the schedule, we're going to do it.
Yeah, totally.
There's a lot of negotiations, they have to go on with it.
We did it at Marsh, so I, I was totally understand like the, how complex the process is. But if we get that conversation going soon, you know, and, and try to see how that looks or maybe, you know, each site figures out how it works for them, um, we could have something in place.
We, we have been actually looking at schedules and it was built on some of the schedules that have been used in the past. And the good news with these kinds of schedules is they can be site-by-site. They don't require a five-year full membership vote. It could be a waiver. Again, I don't want to get into the negotiation process here, but, um, what's exciting about it is those conversations have started with teachers. And because we all know that if we do build something like that in, it's going to take away some of the instructional time. Going back to your point earlier, instructional time won't matter if those kids don't feel like they're supported. So those conversations have been happening. We have, uh, three or four schedules that have been discussed with teachers and we'll see where it goes.
So Ms. Robinson, before we go to our speaker, we have like three more slides for our last backpack, which is behavioral supports.
Okay, uh, let's do that and, uh, then take. Okay, uh, let's do that and, uh, then take a, a quick break and we'll let our speaker know that we'll be back to them. Or do you wanna, board, would you like to take the speaker first after, or before we take our break? Okay, we'll finish our slides, take our speaker, and then take a short break.
Smith King, you're up. No pressure here.
I am. Uh, I think we can all agree about the enormity and importance about this presentation tonight, so thank you. The third piece of our equity-based MTSS framework lies in behavioral supports. And behavioral supports currently in place are referrals that we've got on emotional issues, lack of participation perhaps with students, issues at home, behaviors in classes, et cetera. There's also in-person and at-school counseling interventions that Diane mentioned a little bit ago. We do have school site PBIS teams continuing to meet. And PBIS is, yes, another acronym. It stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. And it's a great framework, um, that helps provide support for students on a positive and not punitive note for behavior. Uh, some sites are fully implementing PBIS, including teaching behavioral lessons, rewarding students and reteaching curriculum. Over the last handful of years for PBIS, uh, it has grown. I have seen it grow. It started with our elementaries, it grew into our junior highs, and it had just moved up to our high schools last year, which was very exciting. Uh, we have had the support of Chico Junior High School Assistant Principal Jessica Capen to assist the growth of PBIS among our schools. She has come to us with quite a bit of knowledge of PBIS, so she's a wonderful support to have. And in fact, I believe two of our elementary schools, Chapman and Little Chico Creek, in past years have been recognized and acknowledged for, um, their PBIS programs in the state. So it is something that we really, really believe in and support here in our district and have seen results. Uh, continued supports that we have, our home visits for families needing support, oftentimes that's our targeted case manager and administrator and such. And, um, you've heard it before, we're gonna continue with the development of the elect, the Equity Alliance cohorts on each site as well. For planning coming back, uh, that will be pivotal and it's already happening on campuses, I understand. We know that when our students are welcomed back in, uh, as traditional school, we know it will be, um, it will be different. We know that there has been a lot of time that our kids have been off campus. And we know that that will have to be reinforced, specifically the, the fundamentals of PBIS will be reinforced with our kids to, uh, experience a full-day return successfully. School sites are planning for lunch and recess protocols with that, um, PBIS model for that unstructured time, which can be oftentimes be, be tough for students. And, uh, which was mentioned here again, to expand our Equity Alliance to include one cohort on each site for the next school year. Three slides, done. Question? Any questions on that?
Okay, Caitlin, yes?
I don't actually have a question necessarily, but I just wanted to, uh, put this plug in here, that behavioral supports, the positive ones are really great. And, uh, that's another piece that gets supported by social emotional health.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
They, they go hand in hand, so.
It is really exciting. Uh, as, as a site principal involved with a school that was heavily immersed in PBIS, the PBIS team meetings were very, very wonderful to attend because so much was considered in those meetings. It took in, you know, all kinds of reasonings of, um, of what was happening with students' behaviors. And I learned a lot, I know, when I was there, and I know our staff continues to learn a lot with that.
Okay, we have one, uh, speaker request. Um, Jeffrey Martinek.
Yes, I'll call him now.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you so much for having me back, uh, so soon. I would like to thank, uh, the presenters that just presented all that wonderful, uh, information, um, to help our, uh, that's gonna help our kids here in the school district. They've had a rough couple of years and they need this kind of program probably more than ever. I also wanted to thank, uh, Ms. Dolby for, uh, clarifying the conundrum that the teachers are in due to the board's, uh, terrible decision to stay in the AMPM model. With the split date, they are actually working harder to get worse results and their public image is being ruined. It's a perception of the public that the teachers are not doing a good job. I'm sure this is causing emotional harm to the teachers as well. So the kids are suffering, the teachers are suffering, and there's no, and, on the district, is spending more money for the same results. And there's no data to support not going back to full-time due to COVID. But the board still refuses to vote to go back to full-time in-person learning. The board is in total control to improve the morale of our entire community. What are you going to do? Please go to full-time in-person learning. Let them play sports, let them play football. The city of Chico needs each other right now and you guys are in control. Please consider the power and magnitude of your guys' position on our community. Thank you.
Okay, um, board, we'll take a 10-minute break and return at eight fifty-four? Oh, sev- oh, okay, seven fifty-four. No, I'm, I'm beginning to feel a little dizzy, I think, from my, my shot. We are now at, uh, eight point one, point two information, child supervision during the 2020, 21 school year. Mr. Marshawn, is this also your?
Yeah, I'm gonna pass it off here to Ms. King here in a second. Mr. Vincent's getting it up for us.
Okay.
All right, you ready, Kim?
I am. All right, hello again. I am here to present, um, some information on our child supervision programs that we currently have running in the district. So a little background information here for you. Chico Unified and CARD have enjoyed a longstanding collaborative and positive relationship. Uh, Kevin alluded to that a little bit earlier tonight when he talked about our facilities. But we've also had that collaboration in our, um, after But we've also had that collaboration in our after-school programs with CARD for many years. And the purpose of those after-school programs, and there are two, our Chico Unified grant-funded after-school program and the CARD after-school program. The purpose of those is to provide enrichment and supervision to Chico Unified students during the after-school hours until 6:00 PM on school days. So that is traditionally what they've always, what they've always been about. I do have on the Zoom with me tonight two of my, I could call them both my right arms because they are equally as supportive and fantastic to help make these programs run. I've got Stephanie Pyle on from CARD. She's the recreation supervisor there at CARD. And Callan Quack, who is here at Chico Unified, a teacher on special assignment in our expanded learning program. So they are on board tonight at this, on the Zoom for answering any questions you might have. So welcome to those two ladies. Little bit more information here is we approached last year. On June 29th of 2020, Governor Newsom approved Senate Bill 98, which I have been here talking about before this, earlier this year. And it provided, a part of that bill provided the CDE to waive sections relating to program hours of operation, grant reductions due to attendance, and pupil-to-staff ratio requirements for our before and after-school programs. We call those expanded learning programs in, in the CDE. Senate Bill 98 also states that CDE may waive the following provisions relating to before and after-school programs during the 2021 school year to provide the needed flexibility to serve pupils during the COVID-19 pandemic. So that is how we were able to have the waivers on our time. So I just want to make sure everybody kind of knew that background information of what the programs typically are and then how they're shifting here.
Mr. Tennis?
I apologize. Can you go back to that last slide?
Sure.
The, what were the waivers? What are the specific provisions that were waived by SB 98?
Program hours of operation could shift from the traditional after-school until 6:00 PM. Grant reductions due to attendance, so the attendance procedures that we typically have in place, the waived parts of those, and then the pupil-to-staff ratio.
So it used to be that you had to go, you had to basically show up?
For the grant-funded after-school programs, yes. I'll talk a little bit about that as we go through it. Yeah. CARD and the grant-funded are a little different in that regard.
Be sure to mention with the grant-funded if the rules have changed about how often you need to be there participating in order to be, continue to be eligible.
Sure.
Thanks.
So in a typical year, we have some information here that was put together in conjunction with Callan and Stephanie from CARD. So I appreciate their help to make sure we had this running as smoothly as possible. It's a lot of information to take in. So forgive me if I'm going too fast with this, and please ask questions along the way because, like I said, there's a lot of information about these programs. So traditionally, pre-COVID, we have locations for our grant-funded after-school programs. So that, I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go on here. So again, stay with me with the locations. Two junior highs are included and Fairview. The hours typically run, as I said, from after-school until 6:00 PM on school days. Elementary, we have first through fifth grades. In our grant-funded sites, we do not have kindergarten. That's one note. CARD does, as you will see. Junior highs, of course, sixth through eighth grades, and then Fairview ninth through 12th. So there is no cost to families in that grant-funded program. Attendance requirements are in place to ensure the program is fully used. The enrollment cap for the grant-funded sites is 89 students per elementary site, 140 for junior high, and 110 for Fairview. Totally 924 kids. Again, focusing just on the grant-funded sites. In that time that we have the kids after school, we have physical activities, homework help, enrichment activities, and snack does come in provided by nutrition services. The programs are run by a credentials CUSD teachers and staffed by CARD recreation leaders. And the actual name of the grant, we call it ACEs, but it stands for After-School Education and Safety Program.
Back to that last slide, please, Mr. Shepherd. Enrollment cap is 89 students per elementary site, 140 for junior high, and 110 for Fairview totaling 924 kids. That doesn't mean there's 924 kids participating in the program now, though.
This is in a typical year. I'm giving you kind of some background information because it helps shape where we are now. Because it's shifted due to SB 98. Yeah. On this slide, we list the allocations from the grant that we get per level there. And I will mention that these are extremely competitive grants. These were all set in place and established far before I came into the picture in this role. And I know that we are very lucky. We continue to try to add more schools with grants to this. And Liz does a fabulous job every year because we always ask her to write, but we do not get them. So it is extremely, extremely competitive to secure these grants. So we're fortunate for what we do have. So typically, again, in a typical school year, CARD also offers at the other elementary sites, they're listed there. They run the same hours that we do. They do include kindergartners with their students, but they do not serve the junior high or Fairview. It is a fee-based program, and the attendance requirement is not there as it is for our grant-funded sites. Enrollment for the CARD programs is typically based on school space availability and parent interest at the sites. And they also include recreation and homework help. They are staffed by CARD employees. And those programs serve in a typical year, pre-COVID, approximately 800 students. So typically, we serve 1,700 students every day after school between the two programs. And that has been in existence for, for quite a long time, as I've mentioned. So moving into 2021. Starting in August, when we were all doing online learning, we did have to, we, there were a couple of things that we needed to do to have our teachers come back to teaching in their classrooms. And also to work with the provision that Governor Newsom included to help serve our students most at risk. The program shifted a little bit. So the programs ran from 7:30 to 3 o'clock. This is an example of that wave of the time. And the programs were open to children of CUSD employees, as, as I mentioned, as teachers and staff were back to work, and targeted students at no cost to families. The programs were funded by our ACEs grant and CARES Act monies totaling approximately $105,000 a month. Continuing on here, they were served at 12 elementary.
Tina, excuse me, Mr. Tennis has a question.
Thank you, Madam President. So how many students in each of these categories? And this is not in a typical year now. This is presently, right?
Correct.
So.
So during the online portion that I'm talking about right now, we had approximately 500. And those were between our, what we call our Workday Child Supervision, which are Chico Unified staff, students, our, our at-risk students, and then CARD's paid students.
So this is between, this is in distance learning, August 17th through October 16th?
Correct.
What was unique about that, that time period? That was when school started, basically.
School began, but we were all online.
Okay.
So the programs did provide supervision during the synchronous time of learning and the asynchronous time. That was when we had both of those going on. And they were coordinated by our after-school coordinators, who are credentialed teachers, and staffed by our classified staff members and CARD employees. This is where we started to really work together with CARD even more so than we do normally. CARD's programs mirrored what we were doing here, but they had 7:30 to 5:30. They, they were fee-based, and their enrollment was open to the Chico community. Those are the 132 kids that I had mentioned. They were located at four schools. And again, same kind of thing, provided supervision during synchronous and asynchronous learning, as well as after-school time, and staffed by CARD employees. Any questions on that before I move to the AM PM? Okay. So AM PM, as we know, started October 19th, and we are running it currently today. I can't mention enough the appreciation that I've had working with Stephanie Pyle and the CARD crew. It truly has been a collaborative effort in a lot of ways. So we do, we did have to shift to how we would continue this program with an AM PM model. That provided lots of different things to consider. What students were AM students, what students were PM students, and the different programs that the schools offered. So AM supervision, and again, I apologize, I know this is a lot of information coming your way. 7:30 until the start of their PM school. PM supervision is the end of AM school until the end of the school day. And we have a third category for parents that would like their kids to stay after school until 5:30, and that is fee-based. So CUSD employees and targeted students again are there.
Tina, excuse me, Mr. Tennis has a question?
Yes.
The fee-based for Chico Unified staff, what does, what are we providing?
As far as the money?
Yeah, and then the time, timeframe. Do they, do they go till 6:00 PM?
The, we, our money pays for them, our money, the CARES Act and the after-school program, ACEs grant, pays from that 7:30 to 3:30. And then, then, because that covers the working time and school time. And then if parents are in need, we only have a couple of our classified staff who utilize the after-hours because they work until 4:30, 5 o'clock. Okay. Again, we use our ACEs grant funding and our CARES Act money to augment it, so approximately $105,000 a month. And this is, so that's been a consistent through August. The students that are, that were in the program from the beginning are still there as a fee-based piece. These are happening at 12 elementary schools, three junior highs, and Fairview. Fairview does have a focus on credit recovery there. And they're staffed by our after-school program coordinators, who are credentialed teachers and CARD employees. So in a nutshell, that is the program, kind of an overview again from what it typically is during a year that is not a pandemic year, and how we have shifted to accommodate the best that we can as we've gone through the COVID year.
Thank you.
Tom?
Thanks. I have a couple of questions, all centering on the same theme, which is how can we expand these programs? We've heard a lot, both from the community at large, about the trouble that AM PM causes to people who are used to having their students safe and supervised during the school day, and also specifically from Enlow Medical Center. And I know they work some different hours. They often have a shift that ends around 7:00 PM, is my understanding. So I'd like to know if we've given any thought to how we can work with our partners at CARD or other agencies to expand these?
Hold on. Are we looking to expand for Enlow, or are we looking to expand for other essential working groups in our community?
We're looking to expand as much as possible. I just know that since Enlow has been mentioned, it would be interesting to see if there is either interest or ability to provide some alternate time structures or some extended time. But in general, I'm looking simply to expand to alleviate the concern and the need that many in our community have for a safe place for their kids to be during the school day.
Yeah, certainly. I understand. The, the biggest constraint we have is our, our ability to house these programs. Because teachers are in their classrooms, here is an example of a difference between a typical after-school program during a typical year and now. Teachers are generally out of their classrooms at the end of the day, or even if they're there working, they leave while the kids are there. So a lot of schools implement their classroom space for the after-school programs typically. With this, with the, this model that we're in, we don't have that. So we've had to look at alternative spaces on campus so that whittles down the number there. We also have been, and rightly so, have followed all of the safety precautions and guidelines of the six-foot distancing. So that has limited space even further. It's kind of winnowed things down. I put out a call to the principals over and over, you know, scour your campuses, see what we've got, let's turn everything over here. But it is tricky because so many places are in use, albeit a little different use now, but they are in use on campuses. So that's been, that's been a hurdle, for sure.
Is there a, I'm sorry, is it a potential to use non-Chico Unified spaces if we found a willing partner who had spaces we could use?
I don't know the ramifications that come with that, to be perfectly honest. As we are not childcare providers, because those are licensed for different purposes, as we know. You know, I, I have been used to the grant world of what's, what exists on our campuses and the liability that comes with that and all of those, those pieces. So to go outside of that, I wouldn't have good answers for you because I haven't explored that part of, of the world yet with this. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Tennis?
Wouldn't there be huge transportation issues to go somewhere else?
I imagine there would be quite a few issues, just in thinking about how our programs are built based on, on grant parameters that, that we have to follow. I can't imagine there wouldn't be a lot of thought and planning, of course, off-site as well.
Mr. Tennis?
Thank you. Can we click on the at-risk subset for a moment? How many of those students are there right now?
Currently, they actually have flip-flopped. I just heard from a gal in my office today that they have, there are now more of our targeted student populations that are able to be on campus during these programs than the Workday Child Supervision. So the numbers are pushed together. And total. Yeah, they're pushed, I don't have an answer separated out. We've, we've pulled them together, but mostly because of funding. But there are a total of, CARD has a total of 280 together.
Do you have any, from the hip assessment, you said that they'd flip-flopped, there's more, what do you call them, targeted or at-risk?
You know, we've referred to them in both ways, and I probably have referred to them in both ways tonight, so I apologize for that confusion. They are our at-risk group. There are students who might be homeless, foster youth, or at-risk that the principals and targeted case managers happen to know specifically on a site are in a unsafe situation, that this would provide some help and assistance.
Is there a way that a family can currently apply for that? I mean, is there, is there an application they can fill out right now or anything like that that we should be advertising? I mean, I've had communications with CARD a little bit about this, and it seems that if the demand is there, there's a, there's a staffing limitation in addition to the, the, the space question. And, and if you, if you only have this much demand, you know, if you have this much demand, but you only have staffing for, for that equal amount, you have to kind of have a little surge of demand in order to be able to hire extra staff, you know? It's kind of like one of these interactive sort of statistics.
So here's where it does get a little tricky. Because in the elementary schools, we have the middle section of the day, which is kind of an overlap. So we actually have double, not double, we would have the AM and PM students together for the middle part of the day that we have to house. So although during the AM and PM child supervision times, the number is, is a certain number. During the middle, we have to have space for all of those kids together because they're still there eating lunch before they go home and different things like that. And, or still there for the supervision, I guess I should say is a better way to say that. So again, follow, follow me here, that it, it, we have to have a certain number that houses that middle balloon number, kind of that bubble number in the center. Additionally, a challenge has been students pick a certain AM or PM, their families, because one works better for the other because of the situation that the school program has. Friends, family, different things like that. So the numbers, unfortunately, it's not a cut-and-dried, even number of AM and PM students. It is, it leans on, heavily dependent on the school, actually, and the program that is running, that is running there. So there are a lot of math factors, for lack of a, a better way of saying, a lot of numbers that we're trying to fit together with the space, with the staffing, and that's. that we're trying to fit together with the space, with the staffing, and that's where it gets tricky.
Thank you, Tina.
Yeah. I hope you could follow that, it's, it is very difficult to follow.
For the most part, I do. We know how I feel about the current schedule that's causing a lot of these problems, and what I think we should do about it. I mean, I, I can't help but notice that we're serving something like 500 students total with, with all of this. Should be serving, you know, the entire student population of, you know, 1,300, it's just, that's my view.
Any other questions? And at any time, I'm, I'm happy to talk more about the programs, typically now, just give me a ring.
Okay, Board, this is an information-only item. Do we have any requests for comment?
We do not have public comment on this item.
Public comment, thank you. Okay. We will move into our information on comprehensive support and improvement, CSI forum. Is Tina, are you?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's me again.
Okay. You're wearing dark clothing, so it's hard for me to see whether you're there or not.
I'm sorry, I am here. Yes, I am here to just present informational only to you and kind of give you an update on what we call comprehensive support and improvement, or CSI. We have a school, CAL, the Center for Alternative Learning, for two years that has qualified to be part of CSI due to the California Dashboard Indicator for Chronic Absenteeism. CAL is a tricky program to, to keep monitoring because kids come in and out of that program, so you're not working with the same group of students and pieces that come as far as intervention and supports for those kids that are, that are consistent for the same kids. Now that said, Andrew Mall, who is also on the, on the line if we have any questions, has done a tremendous job with this program, and he and I both were actually excited to get approximately $170,000 a year from the state for him to help his program support our students to improve their absent, pardon, to improve their attendance rates while at CAL. So, this report, again, it does not need any action on your part. We do present it to our, our colleagues over at BCOE, they look over it and ask us any questions and make sure that we have all of our pieces that we need to have in place for compliance. But this does give you a quick overview. Andrew does have counseling in place, he's got, he's, he's a great outside-of-the-box thinker on ways, positive ways to engage kids and get them here at school. So, he continues to work on that and continues to talk with his site council about what's happening and communicate with families moving forward on that end. So, this, again, just information for you, and any questions you have now or later, you're welcome to give me or Andrew a call.
Tina and Andrew, hi Andrew. On this program and, and the application and approval for the grant, are there statistics on whether or not your interventions are having a difference? I, I, like you said, the, the CAL kids are hard to follow because they're in and out sometimes so quickly. But do we have any statistics that are showing?
So, good, good question. Well, how the state runs that is they look at the dashboard indicator.
Right.
So, interestingly, with timing, of course, this happened during the 2018 dashboard. As we all know, we did not have a dashboard and any indicators last year, so we didn't have a way, according to the state, to measure on how we were doing with that. This year, we will have a little bit more, is my understanding, as far as some indicators. So, that will, that's primarily what the state looks at.
Any other board questions? Okay, thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
Do we have any public requests for input? Thank you.
I do not have any.
Okay. Whoops, X didn't mark the spot. Okay, number four, or number 8.4, discussion, action, approval of the new board policy. Oh, Caitlin, yes ma'am, Ms. Dalby?
I'm sorry, I've been taking a really long time to process this because I, I was trying to follow along Tina's first presentation. And just, I, I would like to see just a table that says the number of students served pre-COVID and during this, like, AM PM model under each funding source and at the after-school program. I can't figure it out through the slides and like your presentation. Does that make sense?
Sure.
And then the total number of students, again, a reminder of the total number of students in the district, just for like percentages sake. I just, for some reason, I can't wrap my head around it, and I couldn't catch all the numbers, and I can't find it in the presentation.
It's, it's okay, there's a lot of information to it, and I apologize, I, I know for throwing a lot of information that on a daily basis, I kind of just roll around with, but I, I do understand that. So, I'm happy to get that together and pass it on to Kelly to give to all of you.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's like very clearly laid out on the record for everybody to take a look at.
And do we have that information easily available, Tina?
We do.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We are now on eight point, or 8.1.4. And this is the discussion approval for board policy 6172.1 that we tabled last meeting. It's the concurrent enrollment in college classes.
Correct, thank you, this is just, this is the second reading, so my understanding is it is an action item.
Yes.
And this is just expanding our opportunities to provide various, again, opportunities for eligible district students to enroll concurrently in courses offered at post-secondary institutions. And these, this board policy would work hand-in-hand with current board policy 6146.1 and 6146.11, and the ARs that are associated with it.
And this is a brand-new policy, correct, Mr. Shepherd?
Dr. Kaiser? Yes.
Correct.
So, I was really excited that A, you pulled it, and B, it comes back like this. So, one of I think of the, because of the parents who are very worried about their high-performing kids getting access to courses that we haven't been able to do at Oakbridge, and that's been a really good, I mean, a really major concern for them. But I'm just absolutely tantalized by the approval of concurrent enrollment, right there where it says any age or grade level.
Yes.
So, if we have a genius, I don't know, Caitlin or whatever, we have a genius kid at 11, we can con, ooh, that is hot stuff.
We do have fifth graders that are excited about accelerating.
All right, that's incredible, thank you very much.
Okay, this is an action item, I need a motion.
Oh, I moved this one, woo!
I need a second, Board.
I'll second.
Thank you. The motion was moved by Dr. Kaiser, seconded by Ms. Dalby. Mr. Tennis, under discussion?
Yes, please, thanks. Fundamentally, what is different between this policy and what we had before this?
We didn't have one before.
No policy, because I'm, I happen, I, I was one of those genius kids, actually. I attended a college course when I was in Chico High, so I wonder how that came together.
So, this is different than just taking a college course.
Right.
This is a course that is concurrently offered through a junior college, community college, and Chico Unified. So, it wouldn't be just going out to Butte College and taking a math class.
When we move, when we, if this is approved and we move to the next item, you'll see, and Kristin Lauer is also on the Zoom, I believe, to, if there are any specific questions about differences between dual enrollment, let's say, and concurrent enrollment. But we do have, do have opportunities for our students that would be improved by the passage of this policy.
I know you're all dying to know what it was, it was a drama class that I took in college.
No, this is in addition to, like, college connection with Butte, and we, we did have Chico State classes that especially our Chico High students in the math and sciences programs did, I, I'm searching for the name of the program.
There is a program that is supported by the, by the Forest Service that is focusing on creating more opportunities for BIPOC students in STEM classes. So, that's one example of a, a support structure that this would expand.
Thank you, we're ready for the vote. All those in favor of passage of new board policy 6172.1 in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you, Board. Okay, college and career access pathways.
Yep, so this is a specific agreement with Butte College to continue some of the services that would now be expanded by this, this concurrent enrollment. And we've been working with two of the Butte College support staff to identify expanded opportunities because some of the limitations, for example, some of the specifications for previously adopted, not by Chico Unified, but by other governing organizations, criteria for teachers to be able to offer these included things like master's degrees or doctoral degrees. And now that we've established a stronger relationship with Butte College, we have the opportunity for our teachers to, to work with Butte College staff and continue to expand our opportunities for kids.
Thank you, any questions, Ms. Dalby?
Yeah, can, can you help me understand more how this looks? Because I know Superintendent Staley just said that it's not, these aren't just kids going to take a class at Butte College, but then I'm so, I'm kind of having trouble wrapping my head around what it is. So, if it's opportunities for CTE growth, which is amazing, I'm a huge fan of like expanding our CTE opportunities for kids. Do, is the program coming to them at the school site, or are they getting bused out to Butte College? It's on the school sites?
Correct.
Okay, and, and it can be any school site?
It can be, well, there's some, there are some limitations, and that's why I referenced the board policy and ARs that are associated with the concurrent enrollment, because there are some criteria. It's not just, you know, any, any comers on any site. We want to make sure we stick to, to, you know, current board policy. Kristin Lauer, do you want to give us an example of what this could look like specifically at one of our school sites?
And it actually could be taught, and in fact, when we were having previous conversations about it, it was to be taught on the high school campus.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Um, can you, can you hear me?
Thanks, Kristin, yep.
Okay, perfect. So, just to, to make this as simple as possible, because it's, it's not totally simple, there are three different types of ways that students can achieve college, college credit. One of them is articulation, and our CTE classes, Caitlin, I know you mentioned CTE, our CTE classes have a ton of articulation in the Capstone classes. And that means that kids get college credit on a Butte College transcript, but it's not as transferable because it shows up as something called an articulation, and doesn't require quite as much alignment between the high school class and the college class on the, on the course outline. Then, the next level, and what John was talking about, is dual enrollment. And that's what the CCAP agreement allows us to do. Dual enrollment means that these are dedicated classes taught by our instructors. Our instructors meet Butte College's minimum qualifications, which are being adjusted because not a lot of, before, when master's degrees in the content areas were required, it was harder for our, our teachers to meet that requirement, and so we had to do a lot of articulation. Now, dual enrollment, it looks like it's going to be more accessible because they have changed some of the dual enrollment requirements in various departments. And so, that's what we're working on right now, is connecting teachers with Butte College departments to figure out where the possibilities lie. And then, the other type of credit you were talking about previously was concurrent enrollment, and those are more open classes, for example, where kids are truly taking a Butte College course. Whereas the dual enrollment, they're closed. It's just our students with our instructor teaching a course that will show up as a Butte College course on a transcript, though not open to the public.
That's the major difference, is we have our kids with our teachers, rather than having older, you know, older students in with our kids.
Awesome, thank you so much for the clarification. I was just also, part of my question, or reasoning for my question, was to ensure that there's no accessibility constraints, if that makes sense, but it doesn't sound like there will be?
There won't be.
I can, I mean, if you want me to expand on that, John, I can, or if you feel like that's good.
No, I appreciate the, the simplistic, as best you could, the description, that the emphasis here is on expanding opportunities for all kids, regardless of, of grade and achievement level.
And Caitlin, I, I hear what you're asking, you're wondering, well, you know, what if these dual-enrolled classes, perhaps they're going to be of a higher rigor because they are dual-enrolled at Butte? It's possible for an instructor, one of our instructors, say at Chico High School, to teach a dual-enrolled course, but not all students will be dual-enrolled because if, if, if an instructor can sense that a student maybe isn't going to meet the qualifications necessary, like the final exam in the course, the instructor can drop the student, meaning the students that, you know, are ready can have the dual enrollment course, college credit, and the others would just have regular high school credit in the same class.
And just to, just to clarify, the student will be dropped from the Butte College roster, but not from the Chico Unified roster?
Is, one of the, the reasons why it's a closed kind of situation is if, if you were to open it, then students over the age of 19 would be able to enroll on a high school campus. I think Inspire ran into that problem when they were trying to do dual enrollment. So, that's why it's closed to just our, our high school kids, as someone from the outside could not just walk onto our campus and enroll in the class.
You got it.
Ms. Dalby?
So, my other question is, is this any way possible to disrupt the AP programs? Is it like going to be a conflict with AP programs, or is it kind of to bolster that or go along with it? I know for some of like the more academic classes.
It could go all kinds of ways, I think one of the, the unique, I keep using that word, one of the unique components here is we might be able to offer more of AP-level courses instead of just the AP offerings that we have now, and that would be, that'd be exciting for our kids.
Yeah, and to add, actually, I'm just, I'm like getting excited and thinking more about this. What's also really awesome is that the, the college credit wouldn't be limited to getting a score on a test. It's actually up to our teachers to, to be able to provide that, so that's really, really cool. Thanks for clarifying all that.
Well, I'd like to move this one, I think it's a fantastic opportunity, 8.1.5.
Thank you.
I would like a second, so that's okay, Ms. President?
Thank you, I have a motion by Dr. Kaiser, a second by Mr. Landau. Any further discussion, do we have any discussion from the public requested?
We have no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Okay, Board, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes unanimously, thank you.
Madam President, I have a, a question about a point of order.
Yes.
I noticed that on our agenda that item 8.1.1, which was our mitigating the impacts of COVID on learning, was a discussion and action item, but there was no request for a mo, a motion? I didn't know if we missed that, or if I just missed that, or if that's an issue to address, or just move on with our, our night.
No, that's okay, hold on, let me find it, because I know exactly what you're asking.
So, on discussion, action, we don't have to take action?
Action.
But if it is listed so that if there is a desired action that the Board wants to take, the Board has the ability to do that?
To do that, thank you.
We kind of just moved past that, we went on a break, and then we, we just didn't, we came back on the next item instead of there even being a request for a motion. So, I, I, I don't necessarily, I'm not necessarily saying I had a motion to put on there, I could have, but I could also bring it up in our actions for next board reading. So, it's not, it's not an issue, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something, and to, yeah, just make sure that we're, we're always hitting that point, just for you to, I'm, I'm working really hard on raising my hand and waiting for you to prompt us.
Yes, ma'am.
And try not to cut anybody off anymore, because I get so excited, so, anyway, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss a step.
Yeah, I, I absolutely hear what you're saying. I was listening during the discussion to see if there was something that a board member was requesting that was something beyond what just, you know, getting the information, looking at the stuff, and, and we did direct, I think, I think, the district to bring some of the things that were highlighted, as specific interests of board members, to us when we look at the April. Madam Superintendent, we have a, a look at next year and continuing stuff for, is it the April?
April 21st.
April 21st board meeting? And so I saw that everything would, huh? Would, would fit nicely in there. Had I heard something that, you know, needed an action, I would have definitely pointed it out. But it, like the superintendent said, it's listed that way, so if we have to take an action to accomplish what we're speaking to, then it's there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're on. Eight, two, that's P. Ginny. Oh, here we are. Architect, thank you. I bet you Julie Kissel's out there somewhere in the, in space.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Hello.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. Going to switch gears a little bit. It's been super interesting to hear all of the information put together by our Ed Services Department tonight. Just an incredible amount of information. Thank you. We're going to talk now about Master Plan Project at McManus Elementary School. We are very excited to get started on this project. If I can get John to pull up the slide here. There you go. First, I want to talk a little bit about why McManus. So McManus Elementary School was moved into the prioritization that it is in for a number of reasons. One of the biggest reasons is to accommodate growth, developmental growth in the northern part of our town. As you know, there's a lot of housing going on in the Emma Wilson, Shasta, Marigold boundaries. And we would like to make improvements to McManus Elementary School in order to create an attractive school that some of the growth may want to go to, to help us crowd, you know, with any overcrowding issues that we might face in the future. McManus is a little bit underutilized site. If you look at our demographic analysis, a lot of students that live in the boundary of McManus choose to go to other schools. And we want to make McManus a fantastic-looking school. It's already a fantastic school, but a fantastic-looking school that is attractive, well-planned campus, so it attracts that growth. If there's any questions at any time, please just stop me, and I'll answer them. So we're going to move on to the next page, which shows the existing campus in a small drawing on the left-hand side of the screen. So this shows what the campus looks like right now. And you'll notice a lot of little blue boxes, and those are all portable classroom buildings. And it will be our goal to replace all of those portable classroom buildings with permanent construction. And if you look over to the larger drawing on the right, this is a conceptual plan that was developed by our master planners. And we may not end up exactly with this plan as we move forward. The first steps we'll take will be to meet with the, the user groups at the school, the parents, the teachers, and the staff to find out what their needs are. So this is a concept, and it could change as we go through the process. But what you're looking at here in the upper area, the buildings that are labeled S, as in SAM, will be a new kindergarten complex. So it will be off of East Avenue, tucked up into the heart of the campus, with its own small parking area for kindergarten parents to park and walk their children in, which we know is, is very important. The R building will be a new multipurpose. The Q building will be a new administration.
Julie, could you identify those buildings by color? From where we are here, we can't read the letter designations.
Oh, yes, of course. Thank you for letting me know that. The R building is one of the orange ones that's right in the center of what you're looking at right now, just adjacent to the parking lot. And the Q building is lower and to the right side. Those two buildings will be the new front of McManus Elementary School. We're going to reorient the campus, so it faces North Avenue instead of East Avenue. When this school was initially constructed, East Avenue was a two-lane smaller street. And as you all know, it's a very, very congested and fast-moving street now. We would not face an elementary school to it the way it is now, and it, it causes quite a few issues. As you, if you read through the master plan, you'll understand what some of those issues are. If you can scroll down just a little bit, John. So the yellow buildings are existing permanent classroom buildings, and those will be modernized as part of the project. The purple A1 portion of the building that you see is the current multipurpose, and it will be repurposed into a new library facility. And then B1, which is over to the right, will be a new addition. So there'll be new classrooms that will be added to the campus. We will not be expanding this campus and making it larger. It is a pretty large school already. And we just want to fill it up, modernize it, make it attractive and safe for our students. Are there any questions on the master plan before I go on?
Nope, doesn't look like it.
Okay. So back in 2018, the Board of Education approved a pool of architectural firms for our master plan projects. The pool includes Rainforth Grau Architects, who provided designs for Marsh Junior High, the Fairview High School Construction Technology Building, Marigold Elementary School, and Loma Vista. DLR Group provided designs for the Chico High two-story classroom building, Neildow Elementary School, and Emma Wilson. Darden Architects developed this facility's master plan and designed improvements for the New Science Building at Chico Junior High School, as well as the modernization of Chico Junior High School. And then lastly is Leonakis Architects, who designed the modernization of Bidwell Junior High, and our Shasta Elementary School expansion project. Each of these firms have performed very well for the district in the past, and have helped us to provide beautiful, safe, and functional school facilities for our community. So our goal, when we're selecting architect for McManus, was really to select a firm that we felt best fits the school community, and that, and their approach to the school, and the process that they're going to go through. We did eliminate Rainforth Grau from the running for McManus, simply because they're very busy for the school district now. They have five projects at Pleasant Valley High School, and they're also working on Inspire School of Arts and Sciences at Canyon View. We asked a number of questions of the architects when we performed the interviews last Thursday. And it was very difficult to decide who of these firms we would recommend to the Board this evening. However, the committee voted three to one, finally, for Leonakis Architects. Some of the key points was that Leonakis brought COVID-friendly technology into the conversation. One of our questions was specifically about how has COVID changed your process? And they had a polling system that they pulled up and rapidly gathered information from us, the interviewers, during our meeting, and it was a very useful tool for them to have, have brought forward. They also brought on a cultural anthropologist onto their team, which we felt was really important, that they recognize and understand the culture at McManus. And then, they also brought forward a really clever phasing plan for us to consider about how we will house students while undergoing a construction project at the same time. So we are requesting tonight that the Board select Leonakis as the architect for McManus, and authorize staff to enter into an initial programming agreement for $400,000 to put together a conceptual plan that we will then bring back to the Board. For new board members, it's important for me to note that we do check in with the Board at every step in this process. And we also invite the board members to participate in the programming efforts at each school, so that they can be informed of, of what we're hearing from the students and the staff and the parents. So I'll open it up for any questions and comments. I also want to mention that Chris Weaver is with us tonight. He's the principal for McManus, and he can share his experience with the interviews as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. I would like Chris Weaver to weigh in at this point. Chris, during our deliberations, one of the things you walked through that I was very supportive of is the process that you envisioned to bring in involvement from our non-English-speaking parents. And one of the things that I thought was very enlightening for me was that we don't get a lot of communication from those families because culturally, it's not a level of involvement that they envision having with their schools. And the work that you've done to pull them in, to let them know that, yes, we do want your input on how the school's going to look, was, was very enlightening for me. So if you could just briefly walk through what you have planned already with involving your parent community in this process?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. So currently, McManus is working with a cultural anthropologist. And we're in the process of doing a critical ethnography, which is essentially a social inquiry from the inside out. And one of the auditable components, or heart pains, was exactly what you talked about, just kind of, just getting more family and community involvement at McManus. We definitely have a lot, but we want to make sure that we're emphasizing folks who are not primary English speakers. So in working with the cultural anthropologist at McManus with our school equity accountability team, we're, we're composing an action plan to, you know, seek out strategies to really increase the involvement.
Thank you. Julie, do we, we have any more information that you'd like to, oh, I know, the, we're in phase four with this project. Do we have a, a timeline for the plans and getting this shovel ready?
Yes, great question, Eileen. It's really good timing, it being February, that we're getting started on architect selection. That means that we will have adequate amount of time to have our programming meetings with staff before they break for summer. And we will get right into design after we bring forward a conceptual plan to the Board, likely in late June, and then we can get started on drawings. It usually takes about a year for planning and programming. So that would set us up so that we could begin construction summer of '22.
Thank you. Board, do you have any, any questions?
I have a question for Chris. Chris, can you tell us a little bit more about your cultural anthropologist? How did you find them? Are they going to continue the work with the architect?
So the cultural anthropologist that we're currently working with, he's a professor at Chico State, and he's also the men's soccer coach, Dr. Felipe Restrepo, somebody I've known for quite, quite a while. And he's actually been involved with McManus in the past, bringing soccer players over, you know, interacting with the kiddos here. So he knows the, he knows the, the culture here as well. You know, in response to the district-wide staff development, where we were talking about racial bias and equity, quick action was taken at McManus. A lot of folks here wanted to do something, and so we formed the Equity Accountability Team. And then later on, got some, some guidance from Dr. Restrepo. And so I'm excited to work with the accountability team here at McManus, Dr. Restrepo, and also Erin from Leonakis, who's the cultural anthropologist, to truly just respond to the, the equity issues, the physical building, and how it responds to the access for our, our students and families.
Great. Thank you, Chris.
I think, Chris, you're supposed to yell "goal" after that.
Thank you, Board. We are ready for a motion, if anyone, yes, Ms. Dolby?
I'd like to move.
This would be moving approval of Leonakis as the?
Yes, thank you. I was going to clarify that on my motion.
Okay.
I wanted to add too, just that I looked into all of the choices, and this was my first choice, simply based on the, their sustainability practices as well. So I was really excited to see that on the forefront of their information that was available online when I looked into it. So looking forward to that piece as well.
Is there a second? Oh, thank you, Dr. Kaiser. I'm, yes, ready now to check to see if we have any comments. Kevin?
Just two points. The Board will start to see in the next couple of months some activity related to our next bond sale, Measure K. So just to point out that we'll have enough cash to make sure we can pay for all of this. And then the second point is, this work is really important, because at the end of it, the goal here is that we put buildings in place that, that are going to serve us well for the long haul. And that they're buildings that have as much input that when we build them, they look like what we draw, and they serve our students the best they possibly can at that site. So it's a really important process, and we really believe we're getting the best results when we go through it. So thank you.
Thank you. That, that leads me to Board President comment. When we began working on the facility's master plan, one of the things that I heard for the first time was the goal was to build buildings that accommodated the education that we wanted to teach, not that we were having to model our teaching to accommodate the buildings we lived in. And ever since then, that's been in the back of my mind every time we work with an architect or builder or planner, is to make sure that what we are approving is accommodating how we want to deliver education. So that was, that's just my take on it. We're ready for a vote. All those in favor of Leonakis signify by saying aye.
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 It is unanimous. Thank you, Board.
Just a quick question, Eileen. The motion was to approve Leonakis, but I was also requesting the, the starter money, the $400,000 to get going?
Yes.
You always want money.
Yeah. I, I see the do not to exceed $400,000. It was not mentioned in the motion. Would the maker of the motion accept a friendly amendment to include that not to exceed $400,000 statement?
Please. I definitely had my statement written out. I was ready for that, and I didn't get to give the full motion, so.
Dr. Kaiser, the, the seconder, okay, then we have, do we need to, let's, let's take another vote to make sure that we have a notation that we did revote to make sure that that friendly amendment was accepted. So all those in favor of amending the original motion to include the $400,000 not to exceed fee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we are back to the main motion. I would like to revote again, that the main motion is now to approve Leonakis, architectural firm for the pre-planning for McManus, not to exceed $400,000. All those in favor? Oh, no, I, we do need a motion. On the, no, thank you. We do not. We do not. It has already been moved and seconded. We are at the voting stage. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Did you get all of that confusing stuff, Erica? Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Kissel, you're up again. We have all these lovely plans from PG&E. We have an easement request. Do you want to charge in on that?
Yes, thank you. The Board of Education had already approved easements for PG&E to underground the utilities along Warner behind the Chico High School Stadium. However, once they went to actually do the work, they realized that they had not provided space for their transformer equipments to... equipment to be maintained over time. So, this is a very simple easement that in three locations, the fence will jog out approximately 10 feet at three transformer locations to allow space around the transformers for their maintenance. And they will be performing all of the work involved with the process, but this is just the easement for them to be able to maintain their equipment on our property, as shown in the drawings. Any questions?
Any question from the Board? Are we... We have any questions or comments from the public?
We do not.
We do not.
Okay, thank you. We are ready for a motion, Board?
I'll move 8.2.2.
I'll second that.
A motion by Dr. Kaiser and a second by Mr. Landau. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Julie, did you have something?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much. We are at the discussion of the Measure E and Measure K general obligation bond audit. Mr. Baltima.
Nothing more exciting than ending the evening on an audit report.
Of course.
But this is related to fiscal year ending June 30th of 2020, and this audit is related to our bonds. And typically, there's really two things to focus in our audit. It's the opinion, and it's findings. And so, just to note the opinion on page two, it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the bonds of the district as of June 30th, 2020, and the changes in financial position thereof for the year, then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." Basically, it means that the financial statements were presented, and no need for any audit adjustments. There are no findings of any material weaknesses, so there were no adjustments or items that the Board or the public needs to be aware of. And probably more importantly in this audit is on page 22, where it actually notes the... and they call it a "performance opinion." And this is kind of the crux of this report, which is a little different than a typical audit, and I'm just going to note it because I think it's important. Sorry, let me get to that point. So, it's on the very final paragraph, and it notes, "The results of our tests indicated that in all significant aspects, the district expended the bonds for the year ended June 30, 2020, only for the specific projects developed by the district's Board of Trustees as approved by the voters in accordance with the requirements of Proposition 39 as specified by Section 1B, 3C of Article 13A of the California Constitution." And I won't even read that last part. But the bottom line is that we only spent bond dollars on approved projects related to the bond measure itself and per our facility master plan.
One of the...
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, thank you, Kevin. That's very important. It's letting the community know they're getting their money's worth for what they voted for. And again, if you might just... We promised something very important when this bond was passed, that their taxes would only be raised by X amount and would not go beyond that. If you might remind us again what that is and the fact that we've stayed within our promise.
Yeah, you'll get a report from the Bond Oversight Committee at your next meeting in March. But two things to point out. Measure E, which was passed in 2012, was what they call a tax rate extension measure. So, the promise to the taxpayer was approve $78 million worth of bond authorization, and we won't raise your taxes above what it was at the time, which was $41.50 per $100,000 of assessed value. Measure K did not have that limitation on it. However, by code, we can't really go past $60 per $100,000 on a specific issuance. So, on Measure K, we could go up to that full $60 per $100,000 assessed value. Both of those amounts, we've been under and fairly substantially, which really speaks more towards the growth of the value of property within our district boundary. So, you'll see some more information, I think, from the Bond Oversight Committee report, and we can provide some detail on that as well. Mekiko, who is our financial advisor, will also be providing some really good information that you'll find helpful as we prepare to sell bonds, because it's important that we maintain that promise to the taxpayers as we sell bonds in the future.
And our rating is also... I sat in on one of those bond sales one time. It's fantastic, because everybody should do it at least once. But our record is another reason why we don't have any problem selling our bonds when we go out. They like us.
They do. We don't have a problem selling, and we've been able to get... take advantage of good interest rates, and shockingly, interest rates are still in a good place. So, I'm hopeful in the next few months, the market will continue to be strong for bond sales, and we'll continue to provide dollars for these projects at the lowest possible cost to taxpayers. That's the goal.
Yes, Dr. Kaiser?
So, Kevin, just to make sure, since you presented the issue before, so the action to be taken here is simply to approve that audit, correct?
That is correct. This is an audit that is done by an independent firm. It's the same firm that did the audit of our financial statements for the district. So, we are asking for the Board to approve this report.
So, I move then 8.2.3.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion by Dr. Kaiser, a second by Mr. Landau on approval of the bond audit. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, items from the floor.
We heard all of our speakers that submitted speaker cards during the first items from the floor, so we have no further speakers.
We have no further speakers. Thank you. Item number 10, Board Member Request to Agendize an Item, is put here as kind of a placeholder if a Board Member... Dr. Kaiser?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification. So, CHIEF has their charter submission here for us, but did Blue Oak submit? Or are they submitting later? I mean, it was kind of...
No, they did not submit. They just wanted to welcome the Board and particularly, the new Board members.
Thank you.
Yes, and in Blue Oak's request, it was just to communicate and say hi to the new Board. Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. Okay, we are items from the floor, Mr. Landau? No, I'm sorry. Board Member Request to Agendize an Item.
So, given that our discussion today about childcare supervision solutions was purely informational, I would like to hear back from staff with any and all kind of crazy out-of-the-box solutions, looking at partnerships with other institutions in town. I really believe that we do need to find some way to expand this program. I understand that looking at facilities off-site may be... add extra wrinkles in terms of transportation, but given that we did move for the AM PM option and put a lot of people in a situation where they need supervision for their children, I think it behooves us to really look as far as we can to find solutions. So, I would love to hear back with maybe some potential actions we could take.
So, as a K-12 district, we are not licensed to do childcare. We contract out with CARD for that. So, would you be looking for us to bring forward CARD to discuss childcare options?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, I guess formally, I move that we direct staff to come back at the next regular board meeting with some potentially actionable items regarding child supervision.
I'm going to second that, and I actually have a very similar thing on my list, if I might discuss it for a moment. So, my item was very similar to Mr. Landau's about providing... looking into all the opportunities to provide extended-day opportunities for students currently on campuses for both academic and social emotional support, because our families want us to turn over every single stone to make sure that we're making every effort that we can to bring as many kids as we can on campuses in a safe way that is still following the guidelines that we are working within, the constraints that we are working within. So, perhaps we could get a cost analysis for adding temporary structures. I don't know, like, what the laws and rules and regulations are of doing, you know, even like outdoor temporary tent structures, if it's just for card activities. And I know it sounds like out there, and I don't know how much extra work this could possibly cost, but like Mr. Landau said, just the bizarre out-of-the-box thinking, partnerships with, you know, local stakeholders that are big business, big businesses with lots of employees that need this for themselves, like NLO Hospital, for example, maybe even other essential worker-type jobs. Maybe they'd be interested in partnering for funding to support their employees, as Chico Unified is also supporting their employees with childcare to the extent possible. It would be nice if we could call on our partners among the community to do the same, and we can all work together to solve this problem, including the cost, max number of students we could serve, how many students would likely experience a teacher change if we did this. Those... all those issues that came up with the discussion of opening full day in general would still be, you know, an issue. So, that's why I'm seconding, and I'm sorry for like the diatribe of like reasons, but I was going to make the same motion, so I wanted to make sure that everybody understood my reasoning for seconding Mr. Landau's motion.
I would just stress that we want to be very careful. We are not and will not be licensed for childcare. And so, then, the other aspect of this... you scared me with the tent, is there's real strong safety, you know? So, I mean, I think we could certainly look at what we might do, but I know that my kids were with CARD, I have other friends whose kids were with CARD, and CARD turned all of us down because they had no way to have that staff work. So, all those people, they lost childcare.
On...
Tom?
Sorry, thank you. On a similar note, I know that CARD's been our main partner here. I also know that Chico State has their Child Development Lab. I don't know if we've reached out to them yet, but that might be another place to look for expertise or people who can provide childcare.
Chico State's not open with their Child Development Lab? I mean, no plans to open.
I was told by a CARD representative today that they're actually mostly utilizing college students who are from Chico, who have returned to Chico. So, Chico State, per se, is not a resource.
Yeah. And we're under discussion, because we do have a motion and a second. I have some concerns about kind of staying within the lines of, you know, what we can and can't do when we're stepping out into an area that we can't even get licensing to do and expending staff time when we're already, you know, stretching Tina and the others with CARD to the max to cover what we're already offering. I just... I have some concerns, and I... So, that's why I wouldn't support bringing it back. I don't see that it would come back in March. We'd be out of school, you know, before we could even get any significant information back to us. So, I'm not going to be in favor of the motion.
Yeah, and just to be clear, this would be for the March 3rd meeting, I'm understanding, which is before spring break, right?
The workshop meeting?
March 3rd is our only meeting in March because of spring break, so it's our...
Oh, okay. So, it would come back for some information in the March 3rd meeting, and then wouldn't be back again until April. And April is the meeting where we're going to be looking at next year.
Yeah, if it was an action item for March 3rd, we could take action on it and see if we could get implemented by the return from spring break. I know I'm talking in like very extreme, like lots of work to be done, but I do just... I want to emphasize that we are empathizing with our families who are really struggling and that we are showing... I just want to show that we're making the best good faith effort possible to provide this need, and if this is all we can do with what we have, then this is all we can do with what we have. But I want to make sure that the public knows that we are searching every single nook and cranny. And if I'm, you know, if I'm out of line, I suppose the Board will vote against this motion.
So, just to be clear, the board agenda item would all be due on the 23rd. So, we're looking at a week to put it together. And it sounds like there's a lot of magnitude, you know, depth and breadth to this particular agenda item.
Isn't the agenda due the 3rd, three days before a board meeting?
No.
It's 72 hours, actually, so...
It has to be posted.
Right.
But there's all the work that goes in putting the whole agenda together. So, those agenda items, Erica just gave it to me, they're all due on Tuesday, the 23rd.
Gotcha, okay.
So, it doesn't... I mean, if we were looking at March, which would be a short turnaround time, I just want to be upfront about the inability to do much depth and research in that amount of time.
Dr. Kaiser?
I... Because, again, I had two kids with the CARD program. My friend had two kids with the CARD program, elementary. And when they said there was no space, they were telling that to almost every single parent who was already paying them the money to have their kid under CARD.
What was the constraint of space, though? Like, what's the difference?
The constraint was they didn't have people.
Enough people, not physical space, but they didn't have enough staff. And so, do we know that CARD couldn't possibly expand their staff?
What CARD said...
We do know that.
What CARD said was it would be at least two weeks for them to even recruit. So, how are they going to even look at this as a possibility and have something ready for March 3rd? I just don't see how they could even possibly process that.
It's certainly a good thing that we discuss as a whole group and no one person makes a decision.
Yeah, no, right.
I think what we, you know, very definitely could do in that short a time is ask CARD to join us and, you know, explain their program, explain what goes into setting up a program since they have been our primary childcare provider. And if there is someone from Chico State, you know, we could certainly have them available as well. What I was more concerned about is our ability to do a very in-depth look at the variety of options that are out there with a week, less than a week away.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, are you clear in what we're voting? Caitlin?
Yes. Do I need to make any kind of a statement as to why I'm going to vote the way that I am?
If you're voting no.
I am voting no.
Okay.
My statement is, I think that we need to orient all the resources of this school district toward the fall and reopening in the fall. And if we are trying to create more opportunities to, you know, expand and can continue with daycare programs, that's going to take up space and resources that we should be orienting toward what our obvious goal should be. toward what our obvious goal should be, given the plummeting case rates, we're now down to point seven people per 1,000 in Buick County who have an active case of COVID. It is clearly not a, a real and present danger to our student population, and probably not to our staff either. And so what we should be doing is our job.
Thank you, okay. All those in favor of the motion on the floor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? No?
Nay.
So it fails, three to two, three noes, two yeses. Did you get the identification on the noes and yeses? Okay, thank you. Okay, any other item? Yes, Caitlin?
Um, I'd like to make a move to add agendizing to all of our meetings and not just our regular board meetings. That way we don't miss a full month of opportunity to bring things up. I understand that these are trying times and not typical of, you know, what may happen, but occasionally we have these catastrophic events, and sometimes it's nice to only have a two-week turnaround rather than wait a whole month to be able to put something on the agenda. So I would like to move to place this task on every board meeting agenda that we have to have the opportunity to add to the agenda for the next meeting, whether it's a special meeting workshop or regular board meeting.
I believe that was the action we took when we set this, no?
We, I think we all believed that that was the action we took, but this thing that we just voted no on, I was gonna agendize for this meeting last time. So I, that was not on our last.
Okay, Superintendent State, I'm gonna ask for some clarification, because I'm confused.
Yeah, when we set the agenda, we set the agenda for the regular board meetings?
That's, yes. Okay, I see the difference. And so the request is that there be one on all meetings?
The request is to add the board member request to agendize item to each, to both the regular board meetings and the special board meetings.
I need a second?
Well, I'm just clarifying.
Because I really don't know. Since our, our workshops are to a real specific group and topic, is that, is that legal for us to do that? I just don't literally know. To have it on a workshop where people might not pay attention.
Yeah, the, the board sets their agenda, so if the board votes to add that to their agenda, the board has the right to do that.
I will certainly second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to be able to add board member request to agendize item to all regularly scheduled board meetings and workshops. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? And the reason I'm voting no is that, that I, I, I think we need to have more time to allow staff to develop our ideas rather than from one board meeting to the next. And this doesn't have a provision to request an agendized item and then be able to move it out two or three months. And I don't.
That, that prerogative actually lies with the board president when you set the agenda, and that is in the board bylaws of when to place an item on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am, it does say that in my board responsibilities, so thank you. I will consider that responsibility a big one. Okay, all those in, we've already taken the vote, I already voted no, it's a four to one approval of the, of the item. And I was the known, the lone no vote.
You weren't the known low vote?
Yeah, it's, it's a good thing we are at the end of the meeting, because I'm getting real foggy. Okay, thank you. It is, yes, Mr. Tennis?
I have four items, actually.
Oh, okay. Under items.
Up the flagpole, and we can take them in rapid fire, we don't have to talk at great length about them. I have been approached by some, a number of constituents who are concerned about increased transient activity near schools. Is there any interest besides me in maybe doing an assessment merely, maybe just by way of information of this issue potentially? I was provided with a photograph of, you know, somebody camping in a dome tent on, on, on one of our school campuses. I thought maybe something as simple as poll or surveying the principals on each campus, maybe, and just getting their assessment as to whether they see a problem or an issue with, with this. Have there been thefts of, you know, children's property on, on weekends, or, you know, is there a big presence socially near the schools, near the kids?
I know it's been an issue. Does anyone want to respond as to what we've already encountered and done?
Well, we haven't done much recently. We did have some concerns about safety of students walking to and from school and our safe school routes, safe routes to school. And we worked with Chico Police Department to ensure that we did have those safe routes. We do have fairly safe campuses in terms of, we have cameras on the campuses that can monitor what's happening. Our biggest issues have been on weekends when the cameras are not monitored, so.
Caitlin?
Yeah, so to speak to, to Mr. Tennis's concern, I, I have been made aware that there are some, there are some things that we have the authority to do as a governing board, especially during a housing crisis, which Chico is still in a housing crisis until this summer. And that is that we could look into using Chico Unified property to partner with other organizations in the community to house unhoused people, people who are unhoused. So maybe that's something we could possibly look into. It would, it would alleviate the concern of, of the sprawl of our unhoused people if, if we could find a way to collaborate as a community and house them possibly on the, the Henshaw Gwen property? Just a thought, I'm just throwing it out there, kind of playing on, on Mr. Tennis's thoughts as well.
I think my, the constituents I'm referring to are concerned about safety of kids. So no, I'm personally not interested in housing homeless people on Chico Unified properties. But I would move that we, as a board, direct staff to survey school principals and report back to us as to whether principals, in communication with their families and staff, think that there are any, any issues relating to safety that need to be addressed by this board.
Well, we do, I'm sorry, are, are you aware that we do have cameras live being monitored by our maintenance staff, correct, Mr. Baltimore?
No, it's, it's important to note they are not monitored. They are always active and they are recording, and we do check them on a very regular basis, but we don't have active monitoring going on.
Okay.
So the cameras have been very effective, quite frankly, of really kind of dealing with any issue of any transit, because we've been able to, like, we found somebody camping, we kind of see it and we go out there and deal with it. The other thing that's been effective is, is fencing in our campuses.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, those are things we've done, kind of related to the facilities themselves. So I guess I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, we have, there's, there certainly would, would be an interest, it seems, to getting an indication by just asking the question of principals, is there a problem? And report back to the board. Would that be?
Yes, I'd be very appreciative of.
Okay. Consensus?
Yeah, I move.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't going to do something official, because we do lots of consensus things. Do I have a second?
To get clarification, the motion is to survey principals regarding safety issues on their campuses.
Yes.
You know, I'd like to pick up on the, the past, what was the phraseology somebody used to refer to the routes that kids take to get to and from school? Safe routes?
Safe school routes.
Safe school routes, is there an issue with either on-campus safety and safe school routes?
And that is in regard to transient populations or in general?
I think in fairness, I think we should say in general, you know?
In that case, I'll be happy to second that motion.
Any further discussion, members? Okay, all those in favor of the request to have a report on safety to and from and on campus? And this must be a voice vote, because the last vote was not unanimous. So Ms. Dalby?
Dalby, aye.
Tennis, aye.
Orlando, aye.
Robinson, aye. Unanimous? Thank you, you had another issue?
Thank you, yes, I have three more, actually. So how do we feel about a socially distanced graduation ceremony this year?
Point of order, real quick, and this is not a, a knock on you at all, Mr. Tennis, I promise. During this time, should we make sure that we're just setting a motion on the floor and maybe giving your purpose, so that we're not having discussion that's, you know, toeing the line of the Brown Act, possibly?
I move that we have a socially distanced graduation ceremony.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second, Tom?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Now we're into discussion. Yes.
I just want to double check that we are not double booking ourselves. Will there be a conversation already agendized or our usual discussion about graduation ceremonies at a later date?
We do typically bring forward graduation information, and last year, because it was different, we certainly brought forward the plans of the different schools in doing so. I do know those discussions are already underway, much of it is gonna be dependent upon, you know, what tier we're in at that particular point.
So do you feel the next meeting would be appropriate time to have that discussion?
You know, I don't think that we have had a lot of discussion about it yet. I defer to Jay and John, but.
Yeah, we again just started. I know that.
I mean, it's early.
The last SAC, they just brought it up for the first time about, you know, where we're at and with our numbers and what we're gonna be doing for graduation. Again, not knowing what the numbers are gonna be looking like, again, we're planning for all different type of situations. If it's gonna be a drive-up one or in-person one, if there's gonna be a six-foot or a four-foot mandate in the bleachers and those types of things, we have to work through all, all that. But at this time, that's just the start of the conversation, this last week.
Dr. Kaiser?
Yeah, I am really concerned about, A, bringing this up and asking, how do you feel? Because we're not supposed to be discussing things. But the second part of this is every single school site, because there's an elementary promotion and, every single school site had a school culture process that they used. And I don't want to detract from them doing that process initially, and as you note, we don't know what the tiers are gonna be yet. So I just would really encourage us not to take the step ahead of the schools. I, I think school culture, I mean, if you see the signs from Roseville and Citrus, and they're very proud of what they, their school site is gonna do.
And the schools are planning, and I can tell you just from the conversations we've had, the schools definitely want to have some form of in-person graduation. I think that's their goal. But they are also planning in case, you know, they cannot do that, they're looking at options just as they did last year. So certainly happy as we get closer to bring this item open or bring it back to the board. And frankly, I think it would be best if the board heard directly from the principals and perhaps some students on the topic. But if it's the will of the board, we'll certainly bring it forward at a sooner time as well, so.
Well, I move we plant, place the question of a in-person socially distanced graduation for at least the high schools on the agenda.
I'm, I'm going to vote no on that for all of the reasons that Dr. Kaiser mentioned, and, and having past experience with everything that goes into that. We don't need, I, I mean, it's gonna be there, and we'll, we'll be complied with what we are mandated to do, and it'll happen. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second in order to allow discussion, correct? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those against? No? No?
Yes. I move that we put the subject of elementary school waivers back on, or on the agenda for very limited use this semester if you have a classroom where the teacher and the families who are involved in that all want to, want to utilize that. I've been contacted by some families from one particular school site where they think they might have that situation in their classroom. And so I would like to maybe create an opportunity for them to use those elementary school waivers.
So the elementary school waivers no longer exist?
Period, huh?
Correct.
Okay. Is there an equivalent step that could be taken by the board to allow a standalone classroom where, where everybody involved, you know, wanted to go full-time, including the teacher, to do that?
That would be action on behalf of the board. The board could take that action. And we would have to make sure that we are meeting all of the safety requirements that are laid out by the state. But that would be action of the board.
I guess I move that we discuss that and create that opportunity.
I believe also.
Mr. Tennis?
I believe also that may need to be negotiated, because we are under a negotiated agreement with our unions for an AMPM day also. So I don't think we can arbitrarily just pick and choose without having those discussions with our unions.
There's, there's also the, the issue of this subject was before the board before, and cannot be brought back before the board unless a two-thirds majority of the board that voted to restrict votes to reopen the discussion.
Well, I mean, that was, I mean, we voted on the issue of waivers, but as Superintendent Taylor pointed out, this is something different. We haven't voted on an issue like negotiating to open a specific single classroom by fiat without any of the process before. I think this is new.
The board voted for AMPM across the district in, in conjunction with the MOU that was approved. Mr. Orlando is correct, it would be a different motion that would come forward to the board. And Mr. Hamlin's correct as well, we would need to make sure that we negotiate that and make sure that.
It's not necessarily a long negotiation, it's just, it's an issue of a simple waiver, but CTA and CSA would have to be willing to do both of those things. So if it's the will of the board, I can certainly enter that into negotiations in our next meetings.
We have a motion with no second?
Sorry, no, I just wanted to clarify Mr. Tennis's request. So is what, what's being asked is for staff to look into what it would take to extend the learning day for certain classrooms at certain elementary school sites? Is, is that what, is that what we're discussing here? Just to get clarity on Mr. Tennis's ask.
Yeah, I think that, that, that probably hits it, you know, on a class-by-class basis.
So I'm gonna second this, and I'm gonna say why. When I, when we discussed this a few minutes ago about looking into turning over every rock, nook and cranny about possibilities of extending the day for groups of students, this would be part of that. And maybe there isn't the, a capacity, but maybe there is some capacity to do that. It, it, it would, we'll see if it would have to be done in an equitable way, but I think it's worth the discussion and the, the presentation. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna second that.
If you didn't second it, I would have, thank you.
Is there, is there further discussion? I'm going to vote no, again, because of needing to stay with our decision to keep our issues about. um, our, our issues about kids back in school for more than the AM PM as a settled issue. That's, I, I, I can't envision, in an AM PM model, how we could expand one classroom's, um, time. I'm, I, I need help from someone who would be able to-
So could I, uh, just to clarify, and, and if this isn't enough, of course, um, so what I'm, I'm wondering is, um, what, what staff's already doing to extend some of the, the time for students? So, for example, in elementary classroom A, um, there is, you know, fourteen students in AM and fifteen students in PM, but three of those students really need to be there all day. So there's three students who stay AM and PM. Like, that would be the example of an extended day opportunity for students. So, what I'm wondering is, is what's the capacity for that? How much of that could we possibly do if we're not already doing it?
So I could be confused. I did not think that that was the, um, ask. What I thought was the ask is, if a teacher wanted to teach in a full-day model with all other students present, that we look at if they can be allowed to do that. Did I not understand that correctly? Because we have the ability now, um, as long as we don't go over the maximums in our caseload for teachers to add students to their class. Have a student from AM, B, and PM if they feel that need, as long as we don't go over the class maximums.
Dr. Kaiser?
I am really concerned about the kind of, literally, it might actually be hostility that might occur if one set of parents perceive that they get to have a special arrangement, maybe only class on that campus, and everybody else is like, what did they do to get that? I just find, not only negotiations, but I just find this to be an enormously, uh, difficult conundrum to explain why this would happen. I really do, I'm, I'm just, oh my god.
I agree with you. I think that that's definitely a point to be taken. I, I, my, that's not what I would envision it being, so, yeah. So if that's what the, if that was, it was presented, I would vote no if we were to vote on it next meeting. But if I was presented something different, like I just said, a more equitable approach, where we say, you know, in this classroom, there's a capacity to increase it by five students, let's do that there, and this classroom could increase by two students and do it, you know, based on targeted needs and all those things, I would be for that. So, and if we're already doing that, or maybe you could at least just present how much of that is happening, uh, that's, that's, that's all I'm saying. And I'm totally hijacking Mr. Tennis's motion, so I don't even know if we're even on track anymore. I apologize for that, Mr. Tennis.
Yeah, no, I'll just let that motion go as it stands. Um, you know, we can take it or leave it. Um, but yeah, I, I just, you know, we know what I think about this, and, and I think that, uh, if an entire class wants to have, um, all-day school on a traditional schedule and they can do it, meeting the requirements that are out there, you know, that's my, that's my motion.
Okay, I think we're all clear, uh, on the motion. Um, how oft, if I might ask, how often do you think this is currently happening? You said that it was that teachers were able to keep kids both AM and PM if it, you know, if there was room and it worked?
I'm just saying we have the ability to do that.
Oh.
That would be within the confines, and we would not be violating the MOU, and that certainly would work with, in, in conjunction with cohorting and giving extra support to students, so.
Okay.
You know, I could not say how often or even if that is happening. I just said that we have the ability.
So what, what we are voting on would be to bring it back to the March meeting as a, an action item with a report of what it would look like? I'm, I'm confused.
We'd be voting on whether or not to bring, uh, the item that Mr. Tennis just, um, mentioned back to a board meeting. The board president has the prerogative to set the meeting that that would be scheduled for.
Okay, are we all clear? All those in favors signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
No?
No.
Okay, four ayes, one no. Dr. Kaiser voted no. Thank you, Mr. Tennis, did you have another?
One last one. Um, thank you for your patience. So, uh, Madam Superintendent, you sent us a question, a board question, that I guess had been put to you. What kind of planning are we engaged in for fall 2021? And when will we tell people how we plan to reopen in the fall? Um, I've been getting this comment non-stop. Um, parents, uh, families, our community, community of Chico, which depends on this school district in so many ways, is hungry to know that we're going to be there for them in the fall. I move that we step up the estimation that you provided to us in this response here, referring to the April 21st discussion time. I think that we should have it as, as soon as, as possible. And, um, and, and my motion is that we, that we agendize it as soon as possible to, to firm up whether or not we are going to, you know, reopen fully in the fall, which I know that so many people want. And they need to plan, so that's why, that's the motivation behind my, my raising this now.
Sarah, second?
You know, maybe I can even be clearer about what date I would, I would put it at. I mean, um, if that would be helpful. If it's not helpful, then-
No, the, the date determination is mine.
Oh, okay.
So what we have is a request that I believe is going to be fulfilled without action at this meeting, because there are plans.
So April 21st, 2021 is, is what the date that, that I got from?
That's the, that would be a regular board meeting.
And why did we choose such a late date for that discussion?
Because I haven't had a chance to take a look at what would be involved with bringing, um, something beyond what we're already planning back.
What we're already planning, by that you mean?
Well, as everyone ha, not everyone, as has been mentioned, there are, um, discussions going forward on how to prepare for, what are we going to do when fall gets here? And there are lots of different, um, things to bring into account. Caitlin?
Um, so we got presented a lot of things tonight that we're looking at doing, starting in the summer and the fall. And those are going to require decisions to spend money, which we're going to have to approve. And we're going to have to approve that before any plans can be made to do our reopening plans. And I'm not saying that it would be nice to, to know them sooner, if that was possible, if there was enough time, it would be nice to know if, if it was sooner. Um, but, uh, I just, you know, I think it's important to remember that, that we have to actually a- approve spending on all of these things, where that we're going to be presented a menu, right, of spending. Is that for the March 3rd meeting? Am I correct in that thinking?
Uh, yes, that's our intent.
Okay.
Just to come that back. And that is specifically to the ESER CARES dollars, that 10.2 million.
So once staff knows where the board would like to see that spending being done, then staff will have the opportunity to plan for the programs that will be happening in, in the fall for reopening. And, and I, I'm also hoping, or I think it's my interpretation, that, that there are multiple, uh, plans in progress. So they're basically doing double time planning for the start of the school year, um, to, 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 uh, decipher different scenarios and be prepared for any case scenario. Um, am I, am I reasonably accurate with that?
Well, I, I'm not going to say that we're going to be able to be prepared for any scenario.
I would never say like hard and fast, but, but ideally, you know, you're trying to, uh, have a few, I, that plans in place for best and worst case, or something along those lines. I'm not like, I'm not putting you in a box here, I promise. Um, but, but for example, why that April 21st, or whatever, 20th day, I don't even remember, I'm sorry, uh, is probably the most likely time that you could get it together the soonest, is because next meeting, we identify where we're spending money, and then staff can get to work to determine reopening plans.
Yes, Mr. Baltima?
Um, at the March meeting, we'll also be presenting the second interim, which is, um, the, the additional update to the current year budget, but part of that is a multi-year projection, so we project out in the new year. So, we typically budget, uh, not only in the current year, but in the out-years. Um, so you have an idea of what it costs to open up school, really in any different model that you have, because a teacher's going to be paid their annual salary, whether they're in a AM PM model or a full day. So we kind of provide that framework for, um, uh, operations, uh, to provide for the next year. The 10.2 is that extra, it's that one-time money that we'll need direction from the board of how do we put those programs in place? Again, keeping in mind it's one-time money. Um, so I just want to point out that I would think that the board is going to feel somewhat comfortable when they look at the budget update, along with the multi-year projection, of, of what the core program is going to cost you, um, whether there's a deficit or whether there's not. Um, and then also in conjunction with that, that kind of menu of lists of the one-time dollars. So, I just kind of point out, from a budgetary standpoint, we should not, I don't think, be standing in the way of your conversation regarding the program for next year.
So, to answer your question, the reason that we did land on the, uh, April 21st board meeting is that we are looking at budget at the next meeting, and, um, you know, really we don't know, and we're not going to know for a while, exactly where our county stands. But what we want to be able to do is make plans regardless of where our county is at that point, so that whatever plans we have in place, if, goodness forbid, that this were to happen, but that were completely shut down again, that we have in place a very solid online, um, learning program for kids. And I cannot say enough, I hope that is not the case. I think I can speak for everyone here, that we want to have our kids back in school full-time when we come back to the fall. We want to be, be able to provide all the extracurricular activities that they have, the interactions with their staff, their interactions with their peers. That is my goal, and I think that's probably everyone's goal. Um, but if we are in a situation again this year, like we got thrown into last year, um, and blame this one on me, you know, I really did not believe we would ever start a year with no school. So we were not as well-prepared as we, we could have been. Um, so I'm not going to let that happen again. We will have plans in place regardless of what, um, the status is of our county, what the reopening status comes from the state, and we want those to be as strong as possible. That's not going to happen in a week's time. So, um, I think as we look and develop, and as we look at the resources that are available, and how that we provide supports in place regardless of what program, um, that we're in, you know, that, that will take some time. And, uh, our next board meeting is March 3rd. The following one is our board workshop, that is a jam-packed agenda that is looking at social justice and bias and equity. Uh, so I don't think that those two big items would be ones that we would want to have there together, so the next available date was the April 21st.
I think the fear that people have is not that we'll be totally closed. The fear that people have is that we will still be in AM PM at the beginning of fall 2021. And I want to give this, I guess, organization an opportunity to send a different message, you know, early on, so that people can plan their, their schedules. So, um, I, I guess I move with the expectation that maybe this will not be seconded and, and maybe not approved, that we step up our conversation to assure the community that we, here at Chico Unified, are, um, prepared to serve our community in the fall 2021 with a full-time, traditional school schedule.
We will be prepared.
Hey, I have not heard a second, so we are at that point. Do you have another issue, Mr. Tennis?
Nope, that concludes my items, thank you.
Okay, are we, are we feeling that we are ready to adjourn?
Can I just summarize what we're bringing back? I have two items, um, that we're bringing back. One is that we, uh, survey principals regarding the safety to and from campus of, uh, students. So, making sure Mr. Marshant's on board here, too. And, uh, that we bring forward, uh, how we would look at allowing teachers that want to teach full-day to be allowed to do so.
Mm-hmm.
Just want to make sure I have that correct from the board, okay?
Okay, we are adjourned.